Commissioner, so we'll start off with that. Okay, oath of office, I. State your name.
Shaylin, I Shaylin Keahanani Ornelas.
Do solemnly swear that I will support.
Do solemnly swear that I will support.
And defend the constitution of the state of Hawaii.
And defend the constitution of the state of Hawaii.
That I will faithfully discharge my duties.
That I will faithfully discharge my duties.
As a member of the Hawaiian Homes Commission.
As a member of the Hawaiian Homes Commission.
For the state of Hawaii to the best of my ability.
For the state of Hawaii to the best of my ability.
And I guess we'll, uh, put you to work. Aloha, Kako, mahalo for joining us today and we'll begin with a pulley of our newest commissioner.
My parents who are in the audience taught us to dive right in, so. And puli kako, our most kind and gracious heavenly father, we thank you so much for the opportunity that we have today to gather together to engage in the work of the Department of Hawaiian Homelands. We ask that you bless each and every person here online and in spirit. Help us to use wisdom, help us to have clear minds and hearts. Help us to be able to treat one another with love and aloha. Help us to be able to, uh, keep in mind the mission and the reasons why we are here. We ask thee to bless those who are working today, um, all of the staff that is here, that they may be guided with their, their eyes, their ears, their minds, their hearts to be able to communicate this meeting to those who are not able to join us in person. Heavenly father, we thank you for the health and strength that we are blessed with each and every day. We thank you so much for the blessings that are poured out, poured out upon us. Help us to operate and move in a spirit of gratitude each and every day. And with that, we thank you for everything that we have. We acknowledge thy hand in all things and we say these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen. Okay. My name is Shaylin Keahanani Ornelas. I am from the island of Kauai. I was raised in Waileua, Nui Ahoano, on the east side of Kauai. Today with me I have my parents, Raymond and Valerie Ornelas, who some of you have met, I have seen. Um, so the running joke is that Kauai has three new commissioners, not one. So they're my, they're my security team. I'm, I'm joking, but, um, I really look forward to carrying on, um, some of the mana'o that I've gathered from the art constituency on Kauai, um, also honoring the work of our most recent commissioner, um, Dennis Neves. And, um, for me, most personally is for my tutu, Harriet Kanoeilani Kawi Ornelas, who was one of the first lessees in Anahola. So for her, I stand before you today. Mahalo.
Okay, uh, the Hawaiian Homes Commission, or the meeting of the Hawaiian Homes Commission is called to order. The meeting is being, being held virtually on Zoom and in person at Hale Poonui ninety-one dash fifty-four twenty Kapoleh Parkway, Kapoleh Oahu. Kali Watson, chairman of the commission, today's date is Monday, July twenty-first, twenty twenty-five, and it's about nine thirty-eight AM. Uh, yeah, we please call the roll.
Commissioner Freitas.
Here.
Commissioner Kalakini.
Aye.
Commissioner Kalepa.
Aye.
Commissioner Keneaku is excused, Commissioner Lasua.
Present.
Commissioner Marfil.
Ew.
Commissioner Namu is excused, Commissioner Ornelas.
Aye.
Chair Watson.
Here.
Seven members present, we have a quorum.
Okay, thank you. The commission will convene in a, a judikatari session and have lunch at noon. Uh, tonight's community meeting will start at six-thirty PM at the Stevenson Middle School at twelve oh-two Prospect Street. Uh, can I get a motion to approve the agenda? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Are there any edits or comments for the budget workshop on June twelfth, twenty twenty-five? Okay, are there any edits to the June sixteenth and seventeenth, twenty twenty-five meeting minutes? Yeah, I got, I got one, um. On page, uh. Nineteen, there's an action item F four regarding the uluke kukui. I recuse myself, but the, um, I guess matrix showing the vote shows me is voting, voting aye. So if you can delete that, that'd be, uh. Uh, any other change or, if not, uh, let's see, with amendment, uh, all those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed, motion carried. Okay, uh, let's start off with, uh, public testimony on the agenda items, uh, first up, Demont.
Yeah, he is. Can we go to the next one?
Sure, uh, Mike, Kai Kina.
And I make aloha in the spirit of aloha to my lord and savior Jesus Christ, I greet you, aloha.
Aloha.
Thank you for that prayer this morning, Commissioner. And, uh, thank you for hearing me, Kali. I come here as a member of the Nanakuli Hawaiian Homestead Convention Association, which you have on your agenda in, uh, as F three. I'm here to report also that I'm here with the other board members that, uh, questioning this item without our knowledge because, um, we find out that they've been having meetings and we, we haven't had a meeting or a report on this economic development of which I, I am the first vice president was assigned to the economic development. And Mr. Chairman here was, uh, was helping us with this, unconcerned because it's a macro management that is helped. Hopefully, I thought we was trying to help our community to improve and better ourselves. But then I'm concerned because, you know, Mr. Chairman, you, 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 you've been managing the macro of, uh, the Hawaiian Home Commissioner. It was interesting listening to the, the swearing in because this last, uh, reaffirmation of the kalima case, I remember reading the, the, the judge said that the commissioners had a responsibility to the beneficiary. But the swearing was that you swore to the state of Hawaii. And that, I guess, answers my thought of maybe why we're so invisible all the time, Kali, Mr. Chairman. I'm here to, to just say the truth, I don't want, I was trying to put something down in, in written order, but it comes to think of it, man, I've been trying to work on policies that that adheres to the intention of the, the law. Because I, I identify a lot of practices in the state of Hawaii and I can talk about it. I'm a veteran from the United States Air Force during a time when people were burning their guys' draft cards. I went to school when, uh, people was identifying my community as a poverty stricken. In fact, we're the capital of the ice. No matter where you go, you're from Nanakuli, you're an ice addict. I, I'm here to say we, we're not gonna buy that no more. Cause we didn't start this project to improve our community. To get better education, to get, uh, to afford our people the economic opportunities. Look at this house, and now you like lease our, our bird right out? How many of the people in there are working or, or even have a lease that is, uh, from the community? Now that Hale Makana is one of the first housing rental low income. And we've never had any reports. The money is supposed to go back to our community to help fund the things to improve or to build capacity. Not only on a broad level, but the community, like the, the Boys and Girls Club, like the NFL Yet Center, like the new Nani Kapono, all wired up, Nanakuli High School. Soon to include the charter school. But I see, I can no longer sit back and be quiet already. I, I, I tired of, uh, being exploited and have my community because we're, we're identified as poverty stricken. And now our scores went down a tube. How can we say we, we accomplishing anything when less than fifty percent of our people live here? That's an indicator, we're not doing well. Sorry to pop your bubble, man, you gotta come out to the reality. My own family is living in the mainland, you think they guys wanna live there? They gotta live there because we fast to move out, we cannot even afford to go get vacation at Disney World over here, Disneyland. In fact, they're overcrowding our beaches. Are you concerned about people shooting each other? But I won't stop that right there, cause I'm talking about the macro, but this, I'm, I'm talking about F three. I wanna suggest that you put this on hold and give you, Chairman, and, uh, the, the president of our so-called association time to make well to hold upon the, upon the Kali. Your name ma- means wait. I don't know what you was waiting on, but I got other members from the so-called board that we were invisible, we're no longer there. I, I question, how did we get off the board? Uh, where is the money? We have never had any reports, so you, Deputy Attorney General, you're supposed to be representing us. So you should be investigating this. Because no can stop people from doing what they gotta do. And we gotta protect ourselves for our children for a thousand generations. These things are not well being, being presented to us, Kali, in our community. And I'm gonna let Erlene and the other board members want to calm down, but for some reason, because they're like me, I don't wanna get over excited, I don't wanna be, uh, if offend anybody, I, I, please forgive me, but, uh, that's why we're human, we get our flesh, but I don't wanna do that. Yeah?
Good, thanks, Mike.
So I'll, I'll let Erlene talk about all those other things, but you gotta, you, you gotta stop, it's me.
Okay, thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, the next testifier shall be, you in there?
All right, everyone watching from home, we got some people, hello Pikachu Shelby, good to see you, Kali Watson, Commissioners. So, we're here to help testify. I know you have a meeting today and tomorrow, you know, we've been in the Capitol, City Council, we're going through a lot of legislation, Senator Kurt Fravella, Patty Toria. We saw the PBS special with Samantha the Court, Demont on TV. I don't approve of certain people's behaviors, but I cannot stop what the deal's already done between Julia and other people. If people wanna occupy land and they're gonna do it, I say a okay. Cause we did it already on the big island with Kukiaimauna, if you wanna do it in Kualahaina, I approve. What you guys are gonna approve of to help get our people on our land back, which is a good thing. Now, because I live in Westside on the Waianae Coast as well, I wanna support what the Nanakuli uncle saying over there, cause they don't know what's going down. For example, I'm supposed to be testifying on Nahazda funds, which is gonna be due to you guys by July twenty-eighth. I've been picked up by Randi Akow and the Kaneheli Community Association to help them send the proposal to you guys. They wanna build a community safety wall, I'll do a formal presentation probably tomorrow, we didn't set it in two weeks in advance, but we did fill out the paperwork yesterday. We sent it to you guys through Oianaleao, but it doesn't ask me for paperwork, numbers or anything. It just asks how many money, there is no limit. This can be used for anything for the associations like in Nanakuli to build infrastructure. We're asking for a public safety wall for a grand master plan already approved by DHHL right here across the street. Why? Because there was a large fire, you guys remember, twenty twenty? The fence was broken down because of random car accidents, and if you guys are gonna build a community safety wall with a community center, self-sustaining with hula concert grounds, I think that's amazing. It's already written in the plans and how many people know about this? Cause I, when I walked the street from here to Waianae to tell the kapuna, I'm gonna tell you guys about this, they have no clue what I'm talking about. Where on the DHHL website, what is Nahazda? Well, if they, if the kapuna behind me and those watching online and all in the state of Hawaii and Hawaiian Kingdom, if they don't apply for the paperwork, I'm so sorry, you're not gonna get any of the Nahazda funds, isn't that correct? And they have to send it to you by July twenty-eighth, which is by Monday. And how come they don't know, which is why I'm concerned. So we'll be sending the official pro- proposal paperwork tomorrow for the GI agenda for the proper time. I won't take your time on this agenda items, but I'm very concerned if Pikachu knows about it and we're doing the paperwork properly, we're gonna send you pictures of the fire, pictures of the wall segments, there's costs, because the concrete wall to build the wall is still there. We're not trying to make you do, build a brand new fancy wall, it's for your own grand master plan. So hopefully you guys can support the community, whatever they want, but I wanna see them put in the paperwork to you guys, so you guys can justify the funds. I know how Kali is, you gotta do the paperwork and the math. So thank you very much for listening and I'll be back tomorrow. Aloha.
Thank you very much. Okay, uh, next testifier, uh, Erlene, good sir?
Good morning. My name is Erlene, Hawaii, Mulang, Lucero. Four generation on Nanakuli Homestead, I got the homestead from my great-grandfather and grandpa, George C. Annie. I have been in that community since I came home in nineteen seventy-five. And, um, moved back home, cause my mom was gonna give up her Hawaiian homeland to DHHL because we were living in the mainland and nobody here wanted to take over the rent. So I moved home. And I also attended Nanakuli Hawaiian Homestead Community Association meetings from when they began in nineteen eighty-seven. And I've been a long time member. I thank you all for having me here today and I appreciate the time, um, that you're giving and also, um, for me too. So I'm testifying today with great respect, I've had to write it, put it in my phone, um. So I don't cry. My dad was a crybaby pastor, so, but, um. To my understanding, the Nanakuli Hawaiian Homestead Community Association entered agreements with developer and he was the project manager for, um, the Nanakuli, both the kapuna center there are Hale Makana and also the village center, Mr. Kali Watson. Through the extension, um, for both developments were to benefit the association and by extension, the beneficiary community. These agreements were firm, formed, framed, sorry, not only as economic development projects, but also as a reinvestment in the Hawaiian Homestead Trust and its beneficiaries. Yet years have passed and there have been no financial accounting, no reporting of dispersed revenues, no explanation provided to the beneficiary community. Furthermore, the leadership has not held meetings, but we have actually in twenty twenty-two, Kali wanted to hold, um, asked our board to get together, but unfortunately, our special members, according to our bylaws, and bylaws, I have served in the community for over like well, forty-five years, like boards, like the Waianae Coast Comprehensive Health Center as president and vice president of their board. And I know that the board of your bylaws drive your association. And those bylaws were, um, dictated, actually went over, in fact, it was denied by this, by DHHL when it first was sent in because they had questions about the way it was framed. The father Harmon of Kahumanah Farms got together and educated us on why special members were required. We call them perpetual members. So there were five and six, eleven board members that would run this association. And the five were, we call perpetual or special members in our bylaws. Twenty eighteen was divided so we could get this contract done to do Hale Makana and also, um, to do the village center. So what had happened was these bylaws, I don't know what happened to our special members, actually, I'll just add this real quickly. I was asked by, we were invited to a meeting twenty twenty-two so that in December, when you all came down to Nanakuli, we were able to show and Patty Tur- Turu was on the board at that time. And, um, we were asked to show, um, host that DHHL board, that was the first time we met. Then after that, we tried to have community meetings with a board that was not basically elected, but kinda like appointed. But I was very happy to have a meeting, cause every year since we had tried to have meetings, I understand Kamaki's mom died in twenty sixteen, board members passed away, but yet we, we were not having meetings and we started. Twenty twenty-three, we tried to get several meetings done. Twenty-five, I'll just bring it up to date, um, there were some meetings, but our kapuna board, we just got on kapuna board. And as of June, this, just last month, I was replaced as a secretary for the board. And I have been the board's secretary since twenty thirteen, so I don't know how that happened, but that's okay, that's another story. For myself, the organization is run by its bylaws. I checked with three of the current by, um, members of that special board, and I guess that's why I got thrown out on the bus. But, um, three of them said they never got letters to attend the meetings or to, um, see if they still wanted to be continued as special members of that board. So like Mike and Mr. Hanalei Ipolani and DeMaj Eli, her position with a gun to, um, our treasurer, she, um, I call her, what's her name? She's an Eli girl anyway, Lihi, Eli, but she, her name is actually Audrey, but we call her, she's our treasurer. But the whole thing today, and I'll just, kinda, I know we have three minutes, um. So I'm just asking that DHHL, you know, we have to, this is our kuliana. The Nanakuli Hawaiian Homestead Community Association needs to find out what's happening within the contracts of these two, two things that we're supposed to own, and the beneficiaries are asking, like, I'm embarrassed, it's like, I, I thank the people like, um, Charli de Mahoy and Kablok, they're doing whatever they're doing to try to get the association, their own association moving. But for me, the contract lies with Nanakuli Hawaiian Homestead Community Association. It is our responsibility to have bank accounts, to have our statements, to know our financial history. This new board, I appreciate them, they're kapuna, they're trying. But the special members have not given up their position. And for me, that's the most important thing. We are held accountable to the kapunas who desired in the eight, nineteen eighties, their vision was to have, Auntie Agnes Cop was one of them. Kamaki's mom said, we're gonna have this village center, we're gonna have pop-ups. Um, at that time, you know, they, there's pop-up tent and they have crafters, they will sell their things to the community, they'll have the Ihilani at the time was the only place down there, we'll have tourists come and they will buy our wares from our families and our crafters and the people in our community, that was the vision. There was a survey done in the eighties, nineties, people walked around and passed out to every homesteader, their desire for the vision of this village center. Unfortunately, today, it is not what our people have, but I am grateful, very grateful that we have a lounge, we have a Wendy's, we have all these things that is very convenient and our people are working. So I wanna protect that interest, but I want accountability. I wanna know what the budget is, I wanna know what our expenses, I can look at a nine ninety and I have. And for me, thank you for your time, I'm gonna stay to your three minutes, mahalo very much.
Thank you very much. Uh, is Demont, uh, okay, uh, the next testifier, Demont, uh, Manole.
All right, I'm here, family. Uh, how's my video, okay, come on. All right, there we go, there that guy, the spooky looking guy on, on your screen is, my name is Demont Kali Manole. And I just here to uplift the spirit of, of everybody in Ahlahui, cause I wanna tell you, um, the reason why I'm here on the, on the public testimony part. Because I wanna send a shout out and congratulations to the land management division. Everybody from Linda all the way down to Kali Young, who's the, uh, the guy who's to do the foot patrol for the department in the Kailua area and all the lands that we have industrial. Kali has done a Kale has done an awesome job, but starting from Linda, Linda, I gotta call you Auntie Linda because you is amazing. Why am I saying all this? Bro, for the last two um, um bids that went out, majority of the bids, the, probably almost all of the bids went to native Hawaiians on industrial lands. If you guys remember back two years ago, that was one of my beefs all the way back to twenty seventeen. Why Hawaiians not on industrial lands? So congratulations to land management division. You heard the call of all Lahui and you have answered that call. There's a lot of native Hawaiian companies now on the land. The other thing I want to um, mention is that there was misinformation about our lands in Kalailoa. It is not prime real estate lands. It is not. And the reason why it's not is because there's no water, no electricity, no sewage. So all our companies that's there, they got a rough one, bro, pretty much off grid. Which is why the department cannot charge exorbitant rates for the land. So again, credit to land management. They know how to work it. So what they did was they gave our companies a great rate that it cannot get anywhere else um, per square inch, um, per square foot and like eleven cents per square foot around there, right? So I just want to send a shout out, people. Land Management Division is doing their job for our people. I've seen it firsthand. I advocate for a lot of the native Hawaiians companies that got land over there. And I know firsthand that Land Management Division has answered the call. And congratulations to them. Everybody, when you see Linda, give her a big hug because she did it. Her, her and her team, Albino, uh, Kahana Albino, bruh, Russell Kaupu, um, Kale Young, obviously Kale Young. Those are the guys that you guys need to look at because these guys are the leaders and they've been making it happen for native Hawaiians on industrial lands. Thank you so much. I may, when I come with my wife, got her doctor, I'll be there at the commission soon when her appointment is done. Love you guys. Aloha. Thank you very much for this opportunity.
Hey, uh, thank you, uh, Demont. Okay, the next uh, testifier, Senator Kurt Favella.
Sorry. I almost needed my bag for that one. Excuse me. Anyway, going forward, uh, just thank you guys for the opportunity. Coming over here because um, development that we have in uh, by the Croc Center that you hear, I guess, Ever Beach uh, expansion on the subdivision. We're having a lot of speeding in the area. You guys are going to be opening up roads and connector roads. Uh, Croc Center from Honolulu to the new subdivision of Ever Beach is a drag strip right now. And um, they're requesting that the HHL, please look into it and then putting some kind of speed table, traffic calming devices. They're really not stopping at that stop sign or the stop light or whatever on the corner. It is whizzing through. So we know we, we, we're blessed to have more homes being built, but the residents over there is feeling the, already the, the heat on what's going to be happening um, if they do open up that road right between the Special Olympics and the new subdivision at the end. So if there's any way you guys can look into um, going forward into putting out some speed bumps, bumps, whatever they was calling over there and just try to help out so that nobody gets uh, hurt or killed in that intersection going forward. But that's it. Thank you, Kali. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Senator. Okay, the next testifier, Patty Kahana Moku Teruya, our past commissioner.
Getting nervous in the back with that mask. Aloha. Thank you, um, Mr. Chairman for this opportunity. My name is Patty Kahana Moku Teruya. And I'll be um, commenting on F two approval of the renewal of revocable permits um, in Kalailoa. Congratulations, Mr. Nellis, to your seat. Look forward to working with you too. Um, first of all, congratulations um, to LMD and I want to open up with that um, Auntie Linda, we're supposed to call you Auntie Linda now, and, and staff, um, you know, and it's um, for the successful um, uh, submittals that they have, they have in front of you of approving some of the, and most of them are local businesses are going to be approved today um, in the Kalailoa to do um, businesses, um, so that the commission will be approving that. So mahalo um, to LMD for um, submitting the revocable permit program, opening it up to ten um, businesses. And um, uh, I just wanted to bring up some of the um, questions that I have on some of the submittals that um, are on the um, submittal. So you have, one of the businesses is Sherwood Eokea. And most of the submittals that you have that are going to be approved are businesses. So I, I just wanted to question why you have an individual um, that's on the revocable permit program that can apply for a parcel in Kalailoa. Um, I understand from the applications that submit from the HHL that they have to fill, which is the application, it, it requires to have a DCCA incorporation articles. It also requires to be in Hawaii compliance, a vendor compliance, your tax um, clearance and all of this component in order to be qualified for revocable permit. Um, most of the businesses that you see listed on your page, submittals is all businesses. Um, so my question was, it's just unusual that you have um, an individual. So is this individual qualified with a DCCA and all of those um, requirements to the commission to get a parcel? So when applying for state or city contracts or grants, you, you need an EIN, you need the articles, bylaws, good standing Department of Consumer Commerce tax clearance and especially the state of Hawaii vendors compliant. So I'm not sure um, how this turned to be a personal um, uh, business person applying. I, I do support this person. His business is four K sanitation. I'm not sure why the businesses, the business is four K sanitation is not on there. He is from um, Waimea Ni Coles. And um, I'm not opposing his business. I'm just trying to find out what the process is where you can put your individual name compared to your, your businesses. Um, so that's something that um, I think LMD can answer as we go forward. The other concern that I have on here is the aloha paintball. And um, aloha paintball, when I looked under DCCA, their filing also is not in, is not active. And so I have concerns if you, if we are the department are going to send out um, RFPs that we should make sure that these vendors are, are in compliance. So this is the DCCA. He's not active. Um, so that is another concern. The other question that I had on aloha paintball, is this the same company that will be on the property in Kalailoa for extreme paintball? And the reason I bring this up is because extreme paintball in Kalailoa who has done business and still conduct to do business, they have a debt of three hundred forty-four thousand to the trust, to the department. So my question is, is this the same company that's having this submittal or this is a new company? My question is, who is paying the debt? I think that's very important for us to answer. Um, three hundred forty-four thousand dollars is a lot of money. And um, it should have been collected from twenty seventeen to present. It hasn't. And so maybe the staff can answer that um, that question. I think it's very important back, because back in twenty twenty-two, um, as a former commissioner, we were, we evicted two businesses in Kalailoa because they were delinquent of their rent and their rent wasn't over eighty thousand. So I just wanted to see the consistency, if we're going to evict a, a business, that we have to be consistent is collecting the rent to the trust and making sure that it doesn't come back to us um, and the department. Um, I do support Kalailoa's initiative. Um, and I understand, um, it is a rough area, open land, lack of water, lack of electricity. Um, and I, and I appreciate the department leaving the square foot footage, square foot opportunity of seventeen cents or eleven cents to our native Hawaiians that can conduct business there because it is a rough ravine. And so um, the opportunity of market value would never work in Kalailoa because of the lack of infrastructure, water and stuff. So I just wanted to just bring those um, to your attention and um, thank you for the opportunity, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. Aloha.
Thank you very much. Okay, uh, the next agenda item, the consent agenda, Juan Garcia.
Good morning, Chair Watson, members of the commission. Welcome aboard Commissioner Nellis. Looking forward to working with you. Again, for the record, Juan Garcia, Homestead Services Division Administrator. Uh, we have items D two uh, to D eleven, uh, D twelve for your consideration.
Yeah, are there any questions on any of those items, um, the commissioners?
Uh, yeah, Chair. If we can have a motion first, Chair, before we go into discussion.
Okay, is there a motion?
So move.
The second?
Second.
Okay, discussion.
Uh, yeah, Juan, um, I talked to you this morning about our delinquency reports.
Yeah, Commissioner, if I, I can stop you right there. This is item D two uh, to D twelve, um, the item D one.
Okay.
Any other questions on other items? Chair. Commissioner Kale Kinney?
Yeah, uh, Juan. On uh, D twelve, can you just summarize on, on one, on that item? Is the uh, payout of net proceeds?
Thank you, Commissioner. Yeah, this involves a relocation of uh, Mr. Santos. Um, back in two thousand sixteen, the commission approved the relocation of uh, certain um, beneficiaries that were um, occupying lands that had unexploded ordinances. And the commission approved the relocation of these lessees. Uh, Mr. Santos is one of those that were relocated. Um, he had certain improvements on the lot, specifically fencing uh, gates and a water tank. Um, he's wanting to get paid the uh, appraisal value of the improvements um, just for his um, expenses.
Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, all those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed, motion carried.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Uh, E one? Yeah, uh, Michelle Hitzman. The next item is approval of lease awards. Pilani Maikai subdivision phase two residential vacant lots in Anora, Hawaii. Uh, Michelle Hitzman.
Good morning, Chair Commissioners. This is item E one.
Yeah.
And recommended motion is to approve the award to the applicants listed below for ninety-nine years. Oh, sorry. For um, Pilani Maikai subdivision phase two. Thank you.
Is there a motion?
A little question.
Okay, discussion. Any discussion? Now, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Uh, E two, approval of lease awards. Pu'ona subdivision residential offering phase one Waikapu Maui. Uh, again, Michelle Hitzman.
Thank you. Um, again, this is item E two. Recommended motion is to approve the award for um, the applicants listed below for ninety-nine years in Pu'ona subdivision. Thank you.
Is there a motion?
So move.
Any discussion? Uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. In, um, okay, E three, approval of lease awards for Ka'ulu Kahai subdivision increments to D, E and F residential project leases, Ever Beach. Uh, Michelle Hitzman?
Yeah. So again, this is item E three, approval for lease award for Ka'ulu Kahai subdivision increments to D, E and F. These are for project leases for the applicants listed below for ninety-nine years. Thank you. It should be Ka'ulu.
Yes. What is it? E three, okay, okay. Um, is there a motion?
Move.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
E four, okay, and item?
Okay, E four is approval of lease awards for La'opua villages one and two subdivision residential project lease Kalua Kona, Hawaii. Uh, Michelle Hitzman?
So finally, this is item E four. This for approval for lease awards in La'opua villages one and two subdivision. This is for residential project leases for the applicants listed below for ninety-nine years. Thank you.
Okay, is there a motion?
So move.
So good, good.
Any other discussion?
Yes.
Commissioner Kale Kinney?
Uh, Michelle, staff, I just want to commend all of you guys for doing all of this. Great, great work. Appreciate you guys doing this.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Awesome. Yeah, just for the benefit of the audience as well as uh, people on internet, uh, these uh, recent actions uh, involving uh, these different subdivisions uh, is attempt on the part of the department and with the guidance and approval of the commission to really accelerate our lease awards. And um, you know, it's very reflective of all the different awards being made. Uh, for example, the Ka'ulu Kahai was over seven hundred that were awarded out. This is a first for the department at that level. Uh, it is a, not only a tremendous uh, accomplishment on the part of staff and I also personally commend the staff for all their work. But also I, I think it's an acknowledgement as well as a, a change in the approach of the department uh, under this uh, this program in which we are really uh, moving forward on not only getting the leases out, but just changing the whole approach, using developers that are familiar with uh, the approaches we're using, which are not only lease awards, but more importantly, uh, using the different uh, homeownership approaches, whether it's uh, our turnkey units, whether it's our uh, low income housing tax credit with option to purchase for those that are less uh, well off income wise or whether it's a uh, self-help Habitat for Humanity approach. Or if we got people that want to, you know, do their own thing and build their own units where we just give them a finished lot. So all these different projects, the level as well as volume is really, uh, I guess, increased significantly. And that, there I'd have to acknowledge and thank the, the legislature for coming up with the six hundred million and under Act two seventy-nine and, you know, I want to personally thank uh, Sen- Senator Favella for his work and supporting us. We look forward to this coming session to go after more money so we can do phase two, which is uh, you know, not only um, required because we got twenty-nine thousand people on the waitlist. And again, you know, it's a, it's an urgent situation. We got people dying on our list, so we look forward to the support. But more importantly, we will continue this program. And so I thank the co- Commissioners for their, their support as well as all the work uh, staff is doing. Thank you. Okay, um, did we, okay, E, E four, uh, we've, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Okay, the next uh, land manager, F one, approval of renewal of revocable permits for the island of Oahu. Yeah, we'll have uh, Kana Albino and Kale Young.
Aloha and good morning, Commissioners. Kana Albino, uh, manager income properties, uh, ranch. Uh, I also have with me Kale Young. Aloha. I drafted this uh, submittals F one and two. Um, we have, land management has four submittals. Uh, with the first submittal F one, uh, we're seeking the approval of renewal of revocable permits on Oahu Island under the various TMKs as listed on the submittal. Uh, Kale is here to uh, address any questions and justify the recommendation as submitted. Uh, if you don't mind, I'll.
Okay, um, glad you, you want to say more, sir?
Well, I, um, Patty had brought up some points that I'd just like to address, get it out of the way.
Okay, why don't we uh, take a motion first?
Okay.
There a motion?
Oh, second.
Okay, now we'll discuss it. Go ahead.
Oh, yeah, um, she brought up a good point about Sherwood Eokea. It didn't.
Oh, I'm sorry. F two for that. Oh, oh, okay.
Oh, okay. Then it is important to um, point out that I had recommended that we hold off on um, uh, renewing um, Waimea Valley Farms, which is uh, actually Nanakuli Ranch. Uh, they did submit some paperwork last week, Friday, and it was before I wrote this up. So perhaps. So perhaps today, we don't approve them today, but maybe we'll can bring that up after maybe three, four, uh, weeks worth of, um, finding out, uh, the delaying paperwork. Thank you.
So you guys wanna take, uh, Nanakuli Ranch now?
Uh, no, we'll, we'll continue as is. We won't renew them.
Right.
However, uh, we'll come back next month with more information, you know?
Okay, thank you. So it's not on the current motion? They're not on the current motion?
They are on the current.
So we need to amend it and take them off?
Are they on the list for renewal?
They're, they're not up for renewal today.
They're not on the list?
I saw them on there, man.
No, no, they're the only ones not, um, recommended for renewal. Okay.
So based on that verbal, uh, note, uh, anything else you guys, any questions or discussions? Commissioner Kalay Kinney?
Yeah, uh, thank you, Kalay, uh, Kalay. Just, um, I was looking to, uh, I did, there's not a photograph for every RP, yeah, in this.
Some, when I went by two times to get your clothes, and I thought, oh, maybe I should just take a picture of a big black screen.
Uh.
Um, some of them, I was ready to put my camera through the screen, so you can see s- screens, but this one, uh, there, there are two of them that I, that I missed.
That's, that's all I had, but thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner?
Um. Aloha.
Aloha.
Is there, uh, would you be able to share with us the rationale for the rate increases? I mean, is it a, across-the-board percentage, or how are these recommended rates derived, or where?
We try to do between a two and three percent bump up for everybody who's been there for at least a year. So that's what we did. Uh, I think we're, uh, about a it's, it's between two and a half to three percent. Yeah. Uh, there were some that did not quite make a one-year period, so they got in like earlier this year. Uh, and we didn't feel like it's right to bump them up until, at, at least, maybe the next, uh, fiscal year, where we'll will come in for, uh, two to three percent bump up. But we let some of them kind of, um, give them a year, let, let, let them, uh.
It isn't across-the-board, um.
It is.
Yeah, yeah.
Second question that I have would be, um, so when these rates are or the increases are shared with these, um, lessees or permittees, do they have an opportunity to, is there any negotiation involved with this?
Uh, no.
No?
The Hawaiian Homes Commission says approve, that's it. They have the right, it's a thirty-day month-to-month lease. If they don't like it, they, they can leave, but I can guarantee you, there's gonna be a whole bunch of people right behind them wanting to lease that property.
And my final question is, at, at that time, where these leases come up, and forgive my ignorance, but is there, um, a review of lease terms and the expectations and requirements of these permits?
Well, we have a standard, um, cookie, I don't wanna use the word cookie, kind of, we have a standard format that we, um, we have in our right of, uh, revocable permits. There are some errors for special conditions, say like a person. Let me give, try to give a good example. A, a, a perfect one that we, we just did, um, somebody has, um, large shipping containers, and at one point, we allowed him to stack his shipping containers too high. But the AG looked it over and said like, ah, maybe we're, we're to keep it low for, for safety and, and that kind of stuff, so. There, there, there is some negotiation, but for the most part, it's, um, yeah, it's right up front. It's actually our, as you, you might have heard earlier, th- these parcels are in high demand. If they don't wanna agree to our terms, they're welcome to look somewhere else.
And just to add to that, it's, we usually do an annual res- uh, inspection on the property, making sure that they're currently, their rent, currently their, um, insurance, uh, making sure that they're within the boundaries that was issued. They extend and we gotta, you know, talk to them and say, hey, you guys are supposed to be in your boundaries kind of thing. So there is an annual inspection that is done for these properties.
Are you privy to the annual insurance audits of these businesses?
Insurance, not the, the audit, but they have to provide a certificate of insurance.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, any more, uh, questions?
Yeah, I have a question.
Commissioner Lassoo?
In regards to renewing their leases, um, do you guys check on hazardous materials in that area, or it's not a, a concern of ours?
Yes, there is.
There is. Oh, and that is checked on heavy?
Right, so like, I, I, I guess the big one is, um, truckers or people who have, um, motor vehicles. Um, the oil dripping is also i- in issue. So those are things that we look for, yes.
And to add to that, too, there's, um, provisions in the RP that usually indicate, you know, if you, um, uh, uh, not in compliance with that type of, uh, situation, then, you know, we can terminate your, your, uh, your RP.
Okay.
And force them to do the remediation and cover those costs, too.
Okay, thank you.
We're protected, you bet. Commissioner Kalay Kinney?
Yeah, uh, Kana and Kalay. So I participated in the, uh, committee to review the RP program. Would maybe it would be helpful if we shared that document with the Commissioners, uh, what we put together.
What is that? Uh, sorry.
When we did the RP, the, the PIG for updating the renewable permit, the program, where, where we switched from ROE to RP.
When, again, when we?
When we did that committee, yeah.
Yeah, so, yeah, um, the, the committee had, um, um, looked over the RP process and had, uh, approved the process that we, um, shared with them. Um, and I think we're converting the R right-of-interest, what was right-of-interest to RP's.
Right.
Um, last year, I think we, we did that. Um, and now we're in that RP process. Um, we've issued, uh, three separate phases in Kalailoa, uh, phase one, I think we only got one?
Well, um, six for the ten lots.
Six for the ten lots. And in phase two, we got ten out of ten.
Oh, we, we got, uh, like sixteen, but we, in all, for I gotta give credit where credit to do. We, um, Hawaiian Homes hired a contractor, CBI Real Estate. Their, um, their realtor, Ka'ala She, uh, didn't just post these, um, vacancies online, but went door-to-door to Hawaiian-owned businesses, solid businesses. And I, I gotta tell you, uh, it made a huge difference, 'cause we had people with solid financial backgrounds, clearly big, good businessmen, and it's, it was good for Hawaiian Homes. But I just wanted to throw that out there, 'cause phase one and phase two, phase two was it, it was significantly more successful. Thank you.
One last thing, Chair. So the revenue generated is like two point nine million from our RP program. And my question, maybe Chair Lassoo, is, uh, I was listening to the program, and we, we, as a department, generate about twenty million a year, so commercial operations, is this part of the twenty million?
Actually, this, this new RP, uh, issuance of the new RP that's coming up will increase, will bump our RP, uh, revenue just a little, three point two million, I believe.
Oh, that's great work. Great work, you guys. Thank you.
Any other questions? Um, okay, oh, we have a couple, or one person, public testimony, Patty Teruya?
Thank you again, Mr. Chair, Patty Kahanamoku Teruya. Um, I guess my question on, um, submittal five eight five Nanakuli Ranch, you're gonna be, um, removing them off your submittal as today. Um, what is the explanation of removing the, um, approval of Nanakuli Ranch? Is it because they're not compliant? Is it because, um, they're having, they're doing something that's not compliant in the HHL? Um, normally, you would inform the Commission why you're pulling this, um, submittal out on five eight five.
Actually, um, in order to draw up the document, we need to have a whole bunch of things. One of those things is an Articles of Incorporation, and they could not get their Articles of Incorporation renewed. On Friday, we got one, um, that came in, so now we have to kind of go through it and, and figure out why it took so long, and uh, there's some, uh, legal things that we need to, a- as you had brought up earlier with Iokea, that we need to go verify. And once we get those things lined up and feel confident, uh, then we're, my plan is to come back, uh, at, at a following meeting and, and ask for approval.
So, being that you mentioned that, then again, when you go to F two submittals, please take a look at the ten that it, that you folks are gonna approve, because you just mentioned, if they're not compliant, they don't have the DCCA, the Commission should take a hard look of moving that forward. That's really important. You just cannot timestamp somebody and then get them in, and then later on find out they're not compliant. If their business is not in compliance, it's such a liability for the department and the Commission, um, to move this forward. Um, I think part of Nanakuli Ranch, I do wanna mention and give kudos to our enforcement team. Um, they have been really, um, um, out in the communities and out with the, um, beneficiaries to make sure that, um, some of these parcels are in compliance. There's no parties anymore, um, which are, any ROE should not have parties or any kind of, um, activity on their property. But kudos to the enforcement team for going out in our communities, um, and keeping us safe in, you know, in our, um, in our homes. I also wanted to, um, um, suggest that, I know there was discussion on ag lots, sometimes, maybe the Commission can talk about it, is that maybe in the future, to look at these large parcels, four hundred eighty-four acres for Nanakuli Ranch for one, one individual is much too much. Um, you could cut it up and, and sort out some of the ag lots distribution. We haven't had, uh, ag lots distribution in Oahu for over twenty-five years, and our list is really long, you know? And so we're waiting for beneficiaries to do, do get ag lots. So these large ag lots properties that have one individual that's not doing so much farming and everything can be looked at with the Commission to, to spread it out and, um, start distributing ag lots. Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Any other commission, uh, question, Commissioners?
I just wanted to make sure, um, I had asked similar questions to this item, and so if I, um, understand that correctly, because we're not gonna vote on this particular Nanakuli Ranch, um, the permit will be canceled and they will be given thirty days to comply, is that correct?
Um. Yeah, that's a good point. Yes, we will. We'll, we'll, I'll let them go on, but again, it's a thirty-day month-to-month, so.
Right.
And just to, uh, quickly answer, oh, just, just to quickly answer, um, Patty's, uh, question. Before we go to contract with those ten people that we're, we're gonna approve today, we have a paralegal who goes through a very thorough process of following up on the documentation. Because what we get is paper, but she goes to websites and does detailed, uh, research before we go to contract on these. And, and the, the, the last thing is, um, uh, Kalani Franda of our land development, uh, department approached me several weeks ago, told me that they are doing, um, they are looking at that particular parcel to, um, subdivide it and lease all these ag lots. Linda, you, did you wanna say something?
Uh, no. Answer the question, but.
Okay, uh, any other questions or comments? Not, uh, all those in favor?
I have a question.
Okay.
Because this is a month-to-month, um, it shouldn't be hard for the, um, the renters to make sure that this information is available? Like, it seems a little odd that this, um, they let this lapse when it's a month-to-month. Do you guys see that happening often with other renters?
Uh, what, what, what's lapsing, I'm, I'm just?
Um. Providing whatever information they need to provide.
Yeah.
Such as, um, ranch.
So a- a- af- after the Commission approved their, their month-to-month term for, uh, for an annual period, uh, we kept on contacting them, say, how's it coming along? And there's a new person just, just took over months ago, was actually, I, I was very impressed, 'cause he came up with documentations showing me how he applied, and he, I, I, I believe he was making a good faith effort to become compliant. Uh, but for whatever reason, um, and it, you know, I felt bad, but I'm glad, uh, 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 last week, Friday, they did come in with some paperwork, so we need to verify that paperwork. Any other questions, Franda? If not, um, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
Aloha.
Okay, next, item F two?
Item number F two, uh, NMD is, uh, proposing that the approval to issuance of new revoke, uh, business revoke permits in Kalailoa, island of Oahu in, on the TMKs, portions of the TMKs as listed on the submittal.
Uh, can we get a motion, um, and then have a discussion?
Aloha.
Second.
Okay.
Again, we have Kalay Young, who can, uh, justify the recommendations as submitted.
An active guy, oh, there you go. Oh, oh, so, um, yeah, Sherwood Iokea did submit an application for that particular parcel, parcel number eight was small. Um, he was the only applicant, and I wanna put Patty at ease, uh, just to let you know that, um, you know, again, we have a paralegal that goes thoroughly with a fine-tooth comb over all the legal documents and stuff, before she even starts typing paperwork. So that's kind of like our safety valve, and so I just wanted to throw that out there. It's, if, if he was competing with somebody else and there was some, you, you know, he, he was the only guy that wanted that pa- particular parcel. Then with, um, Aloha Paintball, Extreme Paintball was the old tenant, they did submit, uh, a proposal, and we would have forced them to, um, to make back payment. However, uh, because they were in default, as we're restricted by, I don't know if it's policy or law or, or whatever, but I think they were automatically dis- uh, disqualified because of their prior, um, delinquency. The new tenant that's in there is a solid, solid businessman. Um, I'm not sure if you saw the commercials, Aloha Termite, uh, John Montalbo. He, he married a Hawaiian, uh, and she, she really wants to see, uh, run this property. They're, they're proposing to put in about a hundred thousand dollars worth of improvements in the equipment. They have a marketing strategy and a well-thought-out, uh, business plan. They're, they're good, solid business people, and I think they're gonna, uh, be a good, uh, fit for Hawaiian Homes. Any, uh?
Question? Uh, Clay, so that, that company you're talking about is not the same company?
No, it's not the same company, yeah. Commissioner Lassoo?
Uh, so the, just for clarification, the Sherwood Iokea is not the four K sanitation that?
He is.
Oh, okay.
But he submitted his, his, uh, proposal under his name, but he, he disclosed his, his, uh, his business, um, bank accounts a- and all that kind of stuff, just that, right now, I'm I could have listed it, easily listed it under that other business entity, but I, I, I thought the more important was he was a bidder, let's get him out there, let's get it approved. Once, um, a, a lot of people do that, they, they come under a DVA or Doing Business As, they have, uh, their personal name, and they have, they're doing business as, or one big business entity doing business as, and bottom line is, our paralegal is sharp, and she's gonna catch everything before we even go to contract.
Thank you.
Commissioner Marfil?
I just wanted to get clarity, how, um, how do we come about the added benefits? Do they just offer it as organizations or through discussion?
No, a- actually, um, on our, uh, application, there's a form where they write out what they wanna do, uh, with, or as a community benefit. So this one took some time, because all they wrote is, all the, what, i- if you notice that, um, two businesses, uh, planning doing fire breaks at, uh, Nanakuli Ranch. Um, so two of these tenants said they worked to, to do that. So I went out and I contacted, uh, So I went out and I contacted, uh, Royal Contracting, who was. Who, by the way, was contracted by the Department of Transportation to cut fire breaks all around the state. And he originally submitted a bid of six hundred fifty thousand dollars to do half the valley. About a year and a half ago. So I shot him back his proposal and said, can you update it? So he went out there, spent some time and, uh, looking at them and he says, well, things have grown since then, so. He came back with a proposal of eight hundred fifty thousand dollars to do it. And, um, then I had to get, I wanted to make sure that when our tenants made such a. Lofty proposal that they would have the capacity to do it, so. After a series of meetings with them and the fire, uh, department. Um, we thought it best that not only we do the fire break. But. pave access roads for fire engines to go through and, and up and down and. This is gonna be the whole Wine Eye Valley. It's a huge, huge project. One year to complete it, uh, at least the initial work of taking down the big Kiave and that kinda stuff. And then, uh, later on, uh, we're gonna try to work with the community. Maybe we can get some, um. Firewise program to work at keeping the brush down and stuff like that, but. Um, when, when, when I looked at that, it, it was, it's real hard to say no to something like that. And so, um. Yeah, we're here today, keep our fingers crossed, you know, it's, until it's done, you, you know. But I, I think we're on the right track.
Well, what I really liked is that added benefit. I think that reciprocal relationship between. The department and our beneficiaries or, you know, folks who are leasing our land, that is really key to the move, moving forward of our people and so. I wanna just encourage folks who are interested in leasing our land. To think about what is the benefit to them, right? And it's a great benefit if the cost is very low. And then how might you add to that benefit for our people? So mahalo for you folks, Ron.
That's listed as one of the criterias in our evaluation stuff, so, yeah.
Any other questions? Okay, if not, uh, all those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, motion carried. Okay, uh, this next item, I'm gonna recuse myself and, uh, Sonoy Marfil, um, will take over.
Okay, so this next item, uh, Land Management Seeking the Approval to the Amendment to Annual Base. Rent Provision of General Lease Number Two Eighty-One and Consent to Mortgage, General Lease Number Two Eighty-One, Nanakuli Hawaiian Homestead Association. Community Association Located in Nanakuli Island, Oahu, Listed on the T M Ks.
Can I get a motion to, or discussion?
Okay. And we got Linda Chin to.
Um, it's a two-part motion, um, just wanted to read it to the commissioner that the first part is. To amend the annual base rent provision for general lease two eighty-one. To show as that it's been revised and replaced in its entirety as well. Annual base rent shall be paid on the first day of each and every calendar month. From and after the rent commencement date, which is the first, the date of the first tenant open business or January first. Twenty sixteen, whichever occurs first, by the less see to less saw at, uh, at the principal place of. Business. The rent is as described as follow, lease year one through twenty-five. The annual base rent for the initial twenty-five years of the lease term shall be revised at one hundred. Ten thousand dollars as the fair compensation to the lessor for the com- commercial use of Hawaiian homelands. Less see is provided with a credit for the two health-related tenants to be located at Nanakuli Village Center. This credit shall be adjusted should either of the two health-related tenants and their leases at the center. And then at that time, no further discount or credit shall be granted. For lease year twenty-six through thirty-five, the annual base rent for the ensuing ten-year period of the lease term. Shall be determined at two hundred and four thousand and eight dollars. As the fair compensation to lessor, subject to the same credit provision of the initial twenty-five years of the lease term. Lease year thirty-six through sixty-five, annual base rental shall be reopened as provided in the lease agreement. So this approval we are seeking is subject to. The following, the amendment document shall be reviewed and approved as informed by the Deputy Attorney General's Office. And then the Hawaiian Homes Commission may set forth any additional terms and conditions shall be. Shall, which shall ensure and promote the purposes of the demise premises. Part two of the motion is we asking the commission to consent to a lease home mortgage in favor of American Savings Bank, a Hawaii corporation. As mortgagee subject to the following. The final loan term shall be approved by the underwriting, the standard terms of our consent to mortgage document. The review and approval of the master lessor's consent to mortgage document by the Department of the Attorney General. Provision of Section One Seventeen Twenty-One Hawaii Revised Statute as amended relating to the right of the holders of security. Interest and then the Hawaiian Homes Commission delegation of the authority. To review and approve the final terms and conditions of the mortgage loan agreement and issue the consent to mortgage.
Seeing no public testimony, commissioners, do you folks have questions?
He's asking for.
Right, register in opposition to this because I did share in the beginning what was my concern. Because, uh, Deputy Attorney General, you better, you better consider to hold this thing up because you're exposing everybody here. You're exposing everybody because you guys are doing something that is illegal. We're not the board, the, we're the board members and the community, all, everything you guys talked about. Where's the community? Nanakuli Ranch? Who is, who are they, man? When, when did the community talk about that? Cali, you know what you're doing? I wanna register. My vehement, please. You guys are exposing yourself. Thank you for listening to me, but now I got the picture. Thank you.
I'd like to say too. As the secretary, as of June twenty twenty-five, I've been replaced. We have not seen these documents. We have not reviewed or voted on them. So if you wanna vote on it today, I guess you can. I don't know what Mike is saying, the Attorney General's here. It's been a long time since I've come to this board. But I come because of my kupuna. The promises made by Mike, by Kali Watson and our Homestead Association. We have not met, we have not voted, we have not seen these documents that he's asking for rental increases. When we haven't seen one penny, one bank statement, nothing. So I can be fiduciarily responsible as a bad. I'm a bad board member because we haven't had meetings because our president and Kamaki has not had a meeting. And we've tried, even illegally, we've tried just to get our people together to do the work. And hold on to our kupuna's vision. Our community, the Nanakuli Hawaiian Homestead community, not necessarily the association. But our community is owed monies. Contracts were signed with our president. He's still our president, Kamakanele, but his mother along with many kupunas in this community. Had a vision and the promises were made to those kupuna. And I sit here saying, if you vote on this, I don't know what you guys voting on. I haven't voted. So thank you for your time, but I pray that you look at, maybe we need an internal. Review of the things we need to be responsible for and I hold myself responsible and our five special members. We need to, we need to come together. We need to knowledgeably. Look at what were the benefits to our people? How did we benefit? Where is the money? Where's the bank statements? Where's anything that we are owed for this project? That's my, Juliana, and I ask for your help and I seek your wisdom. First meeting in a very long time, but thank you very much for your time.
Mahalo and I'm just gonna remind the public, if you folks wanna provide public testimony, please. Sign in at the front so we can have you on the agenda. Mahalo.
I do have Christopher, uh, Flaherty from Nanakuli Village Center that he. He's available to answer any question that you may have. Commissioners?
Yeah. Go ahead, Makai. Okay, I have a question, Linda and Kahana. Okay, so what we are, um. Elaborating here is with Nanakuli Hawaiian Homes Community Association. Can either one of you elaborate more on who exactly has been the folks that. Staff has been talking to about this because, you know, I hear from others. That they weren't in, you know, that they don't know much about it, but can, can you two please elaborate on that?
Sure, um, we, we did receive a request from Christopher. Uh, he is the management for the shopping center. That they need to refinance the existing, uh, they gotta refinance their, uh. Construction, uh, mortgage, uh, the construction law. And in discussion with American Savings, they need a thirty-year known rent term for them to get a favorable interest rate. Um, so that when we initially did the calculation on the rent, it's only for twenty years. And then in, in year twenty thirty-five, it's supposed to be reopened. Um, so what we asking commission is, we did the calculation, we based on the formula that we approved. Or the commission approved back, back, back then, we determined the rent for the next ten years. So they already had the rent set at hundred ten to twenty thirty-five, thirty-four. So they're asking to know the rent from twenty thirty to forty-five.
Let me interrupt, please. So I'm not. More interested in, in the amounts and stuff. I'm interested in the association people that was, uh, engaged. You know, um, I, I hear, you know, some folks don't know nothing about this and all that. Who exactly did, uh, we as a staff engage, uh?
What's the, what's the?
Association?
With the management of the shopping center, I have no discussion with any of the community. Nanakuli Hawaiian.
So the management of the.
Nanakuli Village Center, yes.
Business center, are they representing Nanakuli Hawaiian Homestead Community Association?
They, uh, as far as I know, yes, they are.
Ah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, uh, excuse, yeah, we're trying to, but so. That's who I'm interested in trying to find out, who exactly from the association are we engaging this discussion with?
Well, just like any less see, so we, we getting request is from, uh, is from the. Operator of the project, right? Just like, you know, any shopping center principal here, you know, they have their management team call us. You know, for whatever actions.
Yeah.
So we might not directly deal with the, the less see, but we did, we dealt with the requests that coming from the. Bonafide.
Okay, so now I understand better. Okay, what you shared. So I, I might have something else, but I defer to Commissioner Freitas.
Yeah, so has the marketing agent, or sorry, the property agent had dialogue with the community? I saw him with his hand up there. Uh, I wanna give him an opportunity to speak, please.
Yes, uh, thank you, Chair, and thank you, Commissioners. I'm Chris Flaherty. Um, I've been involved with the, uh, Nanakuli Village Center for quite some time since its inception. Um, I did have, uh, I believe two, uh, meetings with the. Current, uh, board members for Nanakuli Hawaiian Homestead Community Association as well as Uncle Kamaki. And what this, uh, request is trying to do as, uh. You know, as Linda Chin had mentioned, it's trying to, uh, redo the loan with American Savings Bank. And I have provided, uh, all the audited, uh, financials. To all the board members as well as Uncle Kamaki. He is the only one that can sign, uh, on the checks and. Uh, all the bank statements are in the possession of the board, of the current board as I know them, so. Um, but this simple request is to get the known rent, uh, in a thirty-year format so that we can refinance the. American Savings Loan Bank, uh, note. One thing to note is. The original development used Newmarket tax credits and that period was a seven-year period which just expired, so. Nanakuli Village Center, uh, exited the Newmarket Tax Credit, uh, deal, which should in turn. Free up a little more cash flow to the community. And I'm available for any questions if anybody, uh, would like to ask me any questions.
Yeah, it's just a follow-up on that, please. In this, when you had discussions with these individuals representing the homestead associations. In, in those conversations, were there any, did you ask them at any time if they spoke with the community? If they had their own community meetings? And was that information that you folks discussed passed on to the community? Do you have any knowledge of that?
I, I believe so. Um, Uncle Kamaki had, had spoken to some of the board members. Um, I have met with a few of the members. I'm actually mo- met with Mike Kai Kina. Most recently and shared with him that the note needed to be, uh, you know, revised and we were going in for. An amendment and I believe I did share, uh, the audit and financial statements with him. I could be incorrect. Uh, we met about two months ago. But, uh, I'm available. I'm more than happy to submit them to the commission. Um, Uncle Kamaki could not join today. Unfortunately, but, you know, as a representative, I've, I've been involved since the inception, so.
Okay, I, uh, I understand the, the rate increase piece of. The communication piece of it is another major component of this whole process. Uh, and again, Anthony also brought up the fin- the finances, how those finances are broken up. Who are the, who are the individuals or entities receiving tho- those finances? And is there any kind of a. I guess, any kind of a process to make sure the money is going where it's supposed to go?
Oh.
So I think there's a few different parts in the process that we need some, we need some clarification on. Uh, I'm not sure if you can give us all that clarification today, but I do, I would like, I would like the department to, to do some due diligence. To look into, you know, wherever these monies are being dispersed to. I- is it being handled from there and being distributed responsibly to the community?
Actually, that's a great question and I can elaborate on that. Any funds from rents, any monies received. Goes straight into American Savings Bank to a lockbox, which they're the trustee of. And they in turn pay all of the, they authorize payment of their loan. Interest and principal as well as all of the operating costs. And so there is no, uh. There is no access to any funds without American Savings Bank's approval. And that was a condition of the loan originally.
Are there any other funds in addition to once you pay all the bills? Are there any ex- other funds going into the homestead association that you folks know of?
Uh, currently, this past, yeah, this past year, there were no excess funds. There was a. A significant increase in insurance and then we had a, uh, uh, increase in needed security after the incident at Wendy's with the stabbing, unfortunately. And each year, obviously, I'm, I'm not sure if the commission knows that. You know, there's been three empty bays in the middle of the inline space for which we've signed two leases with beneficiaries. Actually, homesteaders, which we hope to have open in the next three to four months. The permits of which are being reviewed by D H H L currently. And at that moment in time, there will, there should be excess funds available. To distribute to the Homestead Community Association for their pursuit, how to distribute. I do believe that two to three years ago, I believe the association received. I believe it was about twenty-five thousand that Uncle Kamaki was able to distribute to the community. To what extent, I, I was not part of that conversation, but I think that was two to three years ago.
Okay, thank you.
Patty, you wanted to testify? Oh, wait, yeah. If, if you wanna sign up to speak, if you can, please, oh. Okay, I, I think you have to do it for this exact time.
Thank you, Mr. Thank you, Mister Chair. Thank you, Commissioners, for this opportunity. Um, so what I'm hearing, there's two phases to this that we need to understand. One phase that she's bringing out. That the Nanakuli Hawaiian Homestead Association is not an association. It, they got new members. Um, we haven't met since October two thousand sixteen, so that's phase one. Um, so when you ask if community were notify, um, majority of the homesteaders. Weren't notified of any changes, what's happening in the commercial Nanakuli Village, because you don't have. Nanakuli Hawaiian Homestead Association. Nanakuli Hawaiian Homestead Association meetings. I don't know how they moved and overcame to got to let go all the old time um board members and brought new board members in. So you know, so there's two phases of that. Phase one is, do we have a Nanakuli Hawaiian Homestead Association? For years, I know um beneficiaries have come up to the commission and told you that we needed help. There's no association, there's no transparency, there's there's, and they're making decisions for homesteaders in Nanakuli, Princess Kahano, Kealanas, and and Princess Kahano, but there's no meetings. And so it's very unfair for other beneficiaries to not be involved in their community engagement, and that's the lack of that phase one. And so it's important, so the phase two is Nanakuli Hawaiian Homestead Association oversees the Nanakuli Village, which uh Mr. Chris Flattery um is is the the management there. Um and so that's the phase two, but you know, if they're if they're coming in to to ask for a rent deduction, I would support something like that, because the economy there has been tough. Since COVID, I've been doing COVID uh Ma Keke markets out there, you know, with your, with the permission of the commission. We have engaged in doing Ma Keke markets and doing COVID awareness um for such a long time, but you know, in Nanakuli, it's just tough, the 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 stores, you know, you sometimes you can see the businesses just having a hard time trying to even keep up their rent or clients to come into the village to spend, we want people to come into the village to spend. And you know, so you know, a rent reduction, I would I would support to help um our community and the village to to gain that um back into that normal um economy where they can manage um, you know, their rent. Um Chris Flattery, you know, he he has been really good to the co- um to the tenants there, and I am gonna express that. Um he has worked with uh one local tenant there, Chris, in um you know, helping a a homesteader to have a shop there and to do business there, you know, and to hire people from Nanakuli to work in that business, you know, young adults and young children. Um the rent they have, you know, work with the rent which what um they can afford, you know, and sometimes with beneficiaries, you have these businesses, you you cannot charge their market rent. Come on, charge CBS and charge, you know, all the other guys his market rent, they're big, big uh stores out there, but when you have beneficiaries in a little cubic center trying to do business, whether it's a shivise or surf shop, they can't afford those market rent there, but they are beneficiaries, they wanna do business on their land, you know, so um. But I think what needs to be resolved is, how do we um help Nanakuli Hawaiian Homestead be a Nanakuli Hawaiian Homestead Association? That's the whole problem, it's been like that for years, the leadership, the communication, open meetings. And you know, I brought this at one time, if they're gonna receive grants and um things like that, grants, especially grants from the department, then they should be under the five oh one, is to be able to work with the community, you know, and to have open meetings and have open discussion. It's really important in a homestead to to communicate and kuka to let them know what's going on, you know, what's going on, and this is what Arlene is mentioning, is this so tough. Um but um that's kinda like what I have right now, and so just wanted to bring up the two phases for the commission, so you can take a look at, you know, what phases and stuff, but um, thank you so much, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any other questions, yes?
I have a question. Is anyone here present from the um existing board? Or so-called existing board, when you have uh members from the um phase one association, I would imagine it's you?
Yeah. So on the special member board, how that works is basically So on our special member board, or perpetual member board, there were five, Kamaki, Mike is second. There's a Ha- Hanalei Aipolani, Auntie Mijli Laipast. And Kimo Kellye was our other uh board member of our perpetual board, who passed. On this perpetual board, they are lifetime members, because what we devised was to protect, okay, our mission statement is to serve, protect, and preserve the interests of na- native Hawaiian beneficiaries on the Homeland Trust. Our Homeland Trust is our associate, the homestead of Nanakuli, and the board was set up to just do that. Eli, cuz I wish Mike was here, I called him, I said, come back, cuz this guy is saying that he met with Mike and gave him the development thing, and he did not, I'm sorry. In twenty twenty two, when we had the board come down to a so- to our um DHHL board, Ila was outgoing. I had Reva Kali Watson and that guy, um or his son, um nine nineties that I found on the internet. And I asked him questions about this money that was there as a member, secretary from the past board, phase one, and now two. But I got thrown out, I guess, I really don't know, I'm gonna go to the next meeting, cuz I went to a meeting on Thursday, a meeting that Kamaki confirms with me that he was gonna have. I fell out of place with the other president, VP president, or whoever she was. Well, actually, her name is Althea Watanabe, we've had tops them. She was a very close friend of mine, I love her, but misguided. So what happened is, I have been pushing for the five members to be active, to come back. They is, they are, they never received their letters, and I was told they did, but there's no proof of those letters. It was not sent out registered mail or certified to the five special members. And the reason for the five special members, they are gatekeepers of our community, they are the wisdom holders of our community. They started this project years ago on the vision of our kupuna. So when we don't have the special members present, and I need to say, then um the Hawaiian Community Assets Program that they belong to, I think the majority of the money are going there, but I cannot say. But I can tell you the signatory, I think that is handling the money, cuz Mike, I asked him, I said, who was the signatories on the um checks? Because we've been asking Kamaki for, as we were trying to form a new board, we need the bank statement, we need bank accounts. Kali told us, after my questions to him in twenty twenty two of November and December, bringing the statements forward under nine uh nine nineties, or whatever it was, um where did this money go? So he came the next meeting, he said, here, you have twenty five thousand dollars. Oh, but we're gonna um take from your budget um to feed the people and the meeting people, that cost us six thousand dollars. But today, that money I have not seen, there have been no bank reports, no for myself, I feel very embarrassed, because I owe an explanation to my community. And I've been holding out and trying to get a meeting going. But I believe Kali is a signatory on our bank account. Because my secretary that was on the previous board, her name is Lihe Eli, and she is a special member. But she's dealing with her own health and things, cuz when her auntie died, she is the next member, or it can be Stacy Anne. Because we have not had a board meeting to say she can, she she can take the place, cuz she was, she is our treasure, period. I don't care who this new board is, but she is our treasure from the first board. And we have not seen anything for that, and I'm very sorry, and I'm very ashamed to be able to admit to you that we don't have that. But this is where it lies, either we have to look at an internal review of the things that have been happening, or our people to get an answer before this can be moved forward. And I love that center, I I love the work for our native people to have and the convenience, okay, I can walk, but I'm too lazy to walk, cuz it's a block and a half away. Um so I am blessed because of the convenience, and this is a vision of our people. I don't wanna lose this project, but I don't, whatever is in darkness, I'm told will be brought to light. And I'm praying for Kailua to make that right, Kali. You have many projects going on, Halei Makana, you have Miley, you have one, and the beneficiaries are these people. Make things porno, that's all I need to say, we need to be porno as we move forward, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh wait, I I have a question for you, uh Arlene, is that your name? Arlene, yeah, thank you. Quick question, so uh as far as you and the folks you're affiliate associated with, like Mike, uh are you, is it acknowledged that uh, what's his name, Kamaki?
Kamaki Konele.
Kamaki Konele, is he the leader of, is he the?
President, and right now, I didn't believe it, but when I first got together in twenty twenty two,
Yeah.
I was told that he may have dementia, I'm not sure.
But but it's acknowledged he's the leader of HHC?
President.
Today, okay. I just wanted to confirm that with you, okay, thank you. Uh now, I have a question for Mr.
Board, we had a meeting Tuesday, um what day was that? Just last month, Tuesday, and they elected him as a president again, and I don't know why they did that, but they're that very smart.
No, thank you, thank you for the information.
What is your question?
Uh for Mr. Chris, uh so on the business aspect of this, is there any time constraints for getting this um appro- approved by the commission, uh I mean, does it have to be this month, in Canada, wait a month, or I'm just curious what the time constraints may be?
You're on mute.
Uh that's a great question, I've asked American Savings Bank for an extension uh of the loan for thirty days, I believe. Um I mean, look, without, let's just face the facts, without uh a new loan, I I don't know what the association's going to do. Um and I don't believe uh agreeing to the current uh lease terms will uh be advantageous to the association in terms of delivering excess proceeds after all loan payments to the association. So uh it's in the best interest of the association uh and the community, for that matter, to request this amendment, so we can have a known lease term, so that there will be excess proceeds to go back to the association and the community.
No, I I fully understand that, I just wanted to know if there's some timing constraints.
There is.
Does it sound like it needs to be done this week, or today, or whatever? I I I'm not hearing that from you.
I can, I can, I could probably request another extension from American Savings Bank on behalf of the association.
That's helpful. Um unless
If that's, if that's the road we're gonna go down, that's, I understand that thought process, but I think there's gotta be a plan in place that we're gonna answer these questions, if we're gonna push this thing down to the next month, um. I'm 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 gonna be honest, a little confused on the overall structure here, like who's who, if now, quick question, Anthony. The meeting, the most recent meeting the community associa- association had, was it posted? Was there, was there any kind of
Email.
There's, there's no emails, calls, nothing that went out to the community that there's gonna be this meeting with a selection?
No. Just the board of directors that they have now, that Kali, um well, somebody put it on the uh I guess it'd be new uh see, um where they do the business licensing that I just saw just recently, and I'm not the secretary as of June.
Good, thank you.
Can I say something?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, um I can hear, you know, there's some concern how the community is created or run, but you know, this is the business side of that Nanakuli Village Center, the longer we delay um their approval, so they can get the mortgage for what they needed to do, getting more money going to the community association, I think we can work that off of the offline between the community and the and the operators of the mall. Instead of holding it up even, you know, maybe thirty days, we might not be able to um get down to where's the board, who's the board, and you know, all that financial question that they have. But that gonna delay the the uh, I mean, you know, jeopardize the mall from, you know.
So bring these terms, refinance the increase in rent, which is twenty thirty four, I believe, twenty thirty five?
Yes.
Kick in, so yeah, roughly ten years before this this process would kick in, right, which is ample enough time to figure some kinds of things out, I hope, right, and I won't be here sitting at this table in that time. Uh but I totally understand the necessity from an economic perspective, and that economic perspective will bring a benefit to the community, right? Good, thank you.
Any other questions?
So Chair, um I have a legal question, and I'd like to request that we move into executive session. It's my motion.
There's a motion. I have a motion on the floor, but the commission will convene in an executive session pursuant to section ninety two dash five HRS to consult with its attorney on questions and issues pertaining to the commission's powers, duties, privileges, immunities, and liabilities. The motion was made second by La Sua. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, any oppo- any opposed?
Commissioner, I have a real quick question, do all you guys hope?
We we can, we have to convene an executive session. We're gonna convene an executive sessions.
We we can, we have to convene an executive session. We're gonna convene an executive sessions.
Thank you.
From informational gathering standpoint, we need to clear a few things up. But just last one for the record, I am okay with the personally. I'm okay with the financial piece of this.
Thank you. Oh, yeah, second emotion too, my bad. Sorry, chair. Any discussion? So what I want is 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 Chris online?
This is Todd Hedrick. I work with Chris. He had to drop off the line and he said he'd be back in about a half hour.
Okay, so what we discussed is that we want to defer this item. But we wanna ask you folks to do some homework tonight. And to be able to give us a little bit more information, including the bylaws for the association as well as the minutes. That says that we voted upon this new board and this is how we're proceeding. And so we just want to get some clarity on that information to be able to make a sound decision.
Okay, so bylaws and minutes of the association.
Correct.
We'll do it account.
For the last meeting, Kalamai, Commissioner Kali.
Chair, I think it would also be helpful if a member from the association chimed in under support for this.
Would it be Kamaki?
Uncle Kamaki would be perfect as he is the new president is what we heard.
Okay.
Any other comments or questions? And if not, all in favor, please say aye. Any oppose? Motion carries. Mahalo.
Thank you.
Thank you. Continue.
Or continue. We can continue.
Mahalo. Okay, last item for action. The LMD seeking approval to issue license agreement to USGS at Kohako Howl Stream in Waimea Island of Hawaii list TMK listed under the submittal. I also have Abby, I mean Ashley Tabanga with me who's the land agent for the West Hawaii Island where this issuance of license is being considered. And she's here to answer or justify the recommendation I submitted.
Can I get a gonna motion?
Any questions?
Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose?
Our motion is passed.
Aloha.
Aloha Commissioners Kalamai. The exhibits didn't get uploaded, so those are coming around to you folks right now.
Mahalo, Michael. Aloha Commissioners Lily Maka'ila, Acting Planning Program Manager here with item G1. Accept the beneficiary consultation report for Kealana Farms request for an easement through DHHL property to Keanuhea Street, Waiohuli District of Kula, Island of Maui, TMK listed. Next slide, Michael. Mahalo.
Thank you.
Folks, this is a picture of the project location. So these are lands that are adjacent to DHHL's existing homesteading area of Keanuhea. Keana Farms is requesting an easement to access water, to access the county line, and it does cross DHHL property to access the water main there on Keanuhea. Next slide. Beneficiary consultation meeting was held in person on May fourteenth, twenty twenty five. Again, this is in response to a land use request. That's one of the primary triggers that requires beneficiary consultation according to the department's Beneficiary Consultation Policy of two thousand and nine. Any long term land disposition for a non homesteading use requires one beneficiary consultation meeting. And that beneficiary consultation report needs to be brought to the commission for acceptance that we have complied with our B C policy. A total of eight hundred and eighty postcards were sent out to invite folks to come to this meeting. Their opportunity to consult with the department staff as well as the applicant regarding the applicant's request for this long term land disposition in the form of an easement. This included applicants that have a mailing list. So DHHL beneficiaries who are applicants on the waitlist. They had a mailing list in the Kula zip code. They were included as well as five hundred and ninety existing Waiohuli LSEs and sixty four existing Keo Kea LSEs. The presentation that was shared is included in the exhibits that came around specifically exhibit C. With all of our beneficiary consultation meetings, we create a website for that to house.
Release number two eight one. Can I get a motion to defer this item?
I make a motion to defer this item to tomorrow.
Oh yes, yeah, before we go forward. Just from a personal standpoint, I I do agree with the financial side of this of this this submittal. It's a necessity, uh but there's a few things from this. From informational gathering standpoint, we need to clear a few things up. Uh but just last one for the record, I am okay with the personally, I'm okay with the financial piece of this.
Thank you.
Oh yeah, second emotion too, my bad, sorry, chair.
Any discussion? So what I wanted is is Chris online?
Uh this is Todd Hedrick, um I work with Chris, he had to drop off the line and he said he'd be back in about a half hour.
Okay, so what we discussed is that we wanna defer this item. But we wanna um ask you folks to do some homework tonight. And to be able to give us a little bit more information, including the bylaws. For the association as well as the minutes um that says that we voted upon this new board and this is how we're proceeding and so we just wanna get some clarity on that information to be able to make a sound decision.
Okay, so bylaws and minutes of the association.
Correct.
We'll do it account.
And.
For the last meeting, Kalamai, Commissioner Kalik.
Chair, uh I think uh it would also be helpful if a member from the association chimed in. Under support for this.
Would be Kamaki?
Uncle Kamaki would be perfect as he is the new president is what we heard.
Okay.
Any other comments or questions and if not all in favor?
Aye.
Please say aye.
Alright.
Any oppose? Motion carries, mahalo. Thank you.
Thank you. Continue.
And we're continue. Or continue.
Okay.
We can continue.
Mahalo. Okay, last item for action, uh the LMD, LMD seeking approval to issue license agreement to USGS at uh Kohako Howard stream in Waimea Island of Hawaii list TMK listed under the submittal. Um I also have Abby, I mean Ashley Tabonga with me who's the land agent for the West Hawaii island where this uh issuance of licenses being considered. Um and she's here to answer or justify the recommendation as submitted.
Can I get a gonna motion?
Oh, so moved.
Any questions? Question? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh all emotion is passed.
Mahalo.
Mahalo.
Hey, the next item G one, uh accept the beneficiary consultation report for Kialana Farms request for easement. Uh lived?
Hello. Aloha Commissioners, Kalamai, the exhibits didn't get uploaded. Um so those are coming around to you folks right now. Mahalo Michael, um aloha Commissioners, Lily Makaila, acting planning program manager here with item G one. Um accept the beneficiary consultation report for Kialana Farms request for an easement through DHHL property to Keanu Heas Street, Waiohuli District of Kula, Island of Maui, TMK listed. Next slide, Michael. Mahalo. Thank you. Um folks, this is a picture of the project location. Uh so these are lands that are adjacent to DHHL's existing homesteading area of Keanu Heas. Uh Keana Farms is uh Kialana Farms is requesting an easement to access water to access the county line and it does cross DHHL property to access the water main there on uh Keanu Heas. Next slide. Beneficiary consultation meeting was held in person on May fourteenth twenty twenty five. Again, this is in response to a land use request. Um that's one of the primary triggers that uh requires beneficiary consultation according to the department's beneficiary consultation policy of two thousand and nine. Any long term land disposition for a non homesteading use requires one beneficiary consultation meeting. And that beneficiary consultation report needs to be brought to the commission for acceptance uh that we have complied with our B C policy. A total of eight hundred and eighty postcards were sent out to invite folks to come to this meeting. Their opportunity to consult with the department staff as well as the applicant uh regarding the applicant's request for this long term land disposition in the form of an easement. Um this included applicants that have a mailing list. So DHHL beneficiaries who are applicants on the waitlist. They had a mailing list in the Kula zip code, they were included as well as five hundred and ninety existing Waiohuli lessees and sixty four existing Keokha'elesees. Um the presentation that was shared is included in the exhibits that came around specifically exhibit C. With all of our beneficiary consultation meetings, we create a website for that to house all the meeting materials, um it's located at the website shown here. Next slide. For this beneficiary consultation, uh there are two parts. The first part is our in person meeting again that was conducted on May fourteenth twenty twenty five. There were a total of fifty one participants, fifty one participants that came to that in person meeting. Thirty eight of those fifty one self identified as a DHHL beneficiary and or a representative of one of the beneficiary organizations. Following our in person meeting, we also have a thirty day comment period that's open for additional consultation. During that comment period, we received thirteen additional comments. Of those thirteen comments received, eleven of them self identified as either a DHHL beneficiary and or representative of the beneficiary organization. All of those comments are included in the exhibits again Kalamai for not having that for you folks in advance, but they are included there. Um mahalo Michael for the next slide, just wanted to summarize some of the major comments that came up. Uh there was one kind of comment and question from beneficiaries that attended the meeting regarding Kialana Farms use of water from the county system and whether or not that would have any interference or negative impact on the department's ability to access water from that county system. DHHL staff was able to clarify that previously um the Commission on Water Resource Management approved a reservation. So DHHL has an existing water reservation on that system. And so um the that reservation does account for the water needs that would be servicing folks in um on DHHL lands in the Kula area. Uh one of the other comments that came about beneficiaries did express some concern about adverse impacts from this easement. Um that it would, you know, cause nuisance, traffic, noise um and other types of nuisance on the existing homestead because the homestead is already established there. Another comment, uh series of comments that came up, there were some general concerns about uh Kialana Farms um status of as a neighbor to the existing homestead. Some folks expressed that they hadn't always felt like the farm was a good neighbor um to that existing homestead and they wanted to um bring that to the department's attention. Um so in the planning office's recommendations, we're just suggesting that some language uh for conditions be included in any long term land disposition to ensure that uh the applicant maintains a good relationship with our existing homestead beneficiaries in that area. Um also our Keokha agricultural homestead lessees did express at this beneficiary uh consultation their deep frustration with how long they have been waiting. Um that they have been waiting uh decades for sufficient water. Um and of course, the general sentiment of all of our applicants that have been waiting on the waitlist for decades. Next slide, mahalo. Um there also were comments regarding a give back. Um that the applicant didn't appear to have any um give back or any benefits that might um before our uh existing homesteaders and or beneficiaries in the region. Um and so that is another a- aspect that DHHL staff has commented on. Uh part of our recommendation is that should a long term land disposition be considered uh that some type of conditions be put in there to address um more of a formal relationship or uh expressly communicate what types of benefits there would be um in, you know, allowing this disposition on DHHL lands. How can we ensure that there is a benefit uh to the trust and our existing homesteaders? Uh there was also question about um the application itself. Kialana Farms folks mentioned that this was the only area that they would be able to access um the county water system. Um however, we don't actually have uh a memo or a letter that says that this is the only area that they would be able to access uh the county water system. So um one of the recommendations is should the department proceed with a long term land disposition that we um first ask the applicant to produce an official letter or memo of some kind from the county water system that just explains to us uh what that need is for them and um if there are other locations that perhaps wouldn't require an easement across DHHL lands. Um Pau Pena Community Development Corporation also expressed that they've been waiting for water meters from the county um and for DHHL to act on land use requests that they have put um forth in this area. So it is frustrating for our beneficiaries and beneficiary organizations to see action on other land use requests without movement on their own. Um there was also support that was shared both in comments at the meeting as well as um emailed and sent in comments after general support for Kialana Farms easement request. Um they also asked that uh there there's a particular access gate and some concerns about the ask access gate, so they had asked that um the issues and concerns around the access gate also be captured in any long term land disposition. Just to ensure that, you know, there's no um adverse impacts on the existing homestead. Uh folks don't want a lot of traffic, additional traffic coming through that access gate for the easement. Um and then in general, there were some comments that just provided general support uh that you can see in the um exhibits. So next steps regarding this, we've come before you folks today uh to share what the um beneficiary consultation process was, both with the in person meeting as well as the thirty day comment period. The types of comments that we have received. We're asking today that you folks um take action to accept the beneficiary consultation as complete, that we have fulfilled our beneficiary consultation policy. Again, just wanna share this is not taking action on the land disposition only on uh whether or not we have sufficiently fulfilled our beneficiary consultation with the production of this report. Um DHHL is also, DHHL staff is also requesting that we get that letter um from the applicant with correspondence with the county water system so that we better understand uh the need for that easement. As well as in the future, uh should this long term land disposition come before the commission, we ask that there be conditions in there that address the concerns that the beneficiaries have brought up in this beneficiary consultation process. Um if the applicant is able to satisfy uh these requests and address the issues uh DHHL staff and DHHL staff wishes to proceed with this land disposition. Um the next steps would include issuance of a right of entry, so the easement even though it's pretty minimal land disturbance, there is still a requirement to comply with both HRS chapter three four three as well as HRS chapter six E. So that's for environmental compliance as well as for historic preservation. And then um the next step, once there the compliance would be fulfilled would be an issuance of a long term land disposition in the form of an easement. Today's staff um respectfully ask that you take action on uh the recommendation as written, mahalo.
Little question. You know this access gate?
Yes.
Um on the map that you have here, is it the same place where this road is to enter where the water is gonna go?
I believe so, I believe so.
Okay, so I do know that um some of the homeowners in that area had reached out to me about um the traffic and the dust.
Correct.
To that access gate.
Correct.
Uh is, and that's the only place that he can enter uh the property.
For, I believe they do have another entry, you know, I would have to double check because one of the other staff performed the beneficiary consultation, so I do wanna disclose that I have not visited the site in person. Um and so I'm not able to speak if they have additional entries. I do know that when I look through the research that that roadway access um is the primary location for the easement for the water line. However, in the beneficiary consultation, when folks were bringing up concerns about dust, traffic, noise and other nuisances through the access of that gate, part of the conversation had to do with can the applicant retire that particular access?
Yeah.
You know, shut down that gate so that it's not a part of daily operations and and use um a different access to the property. So that is part of um the suggested remedies for the issues beneficiaries brought up.
Okay. Thank you.
Mahalo. Other questions?
Any other question?
So this is just to accept the beneficiary consultation reports, not really to give them a easement or anything like.
Correct.
And you had some recommendations on some of the things that we shouldn't be exploring before we make a decision.
Yes, chair.
Uh any other questions?
No.
If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, can we get a motion?
So moved, second.
Okay, any other discussion? Uh okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carry.
Mahalo.
Yeah. Okay, uh we're gonna do a lunch uh recess and a contested case hearings deliberations. So we will reconvene at one P M. Thank you, everybody.
Report submitted since our last update is 56 and total number of reports submitted in the calendar year is 176. And in addition to that, we sent out eight official correspondences to our beneficiaries regarding some type of ongoing investigation. During this timeframe, there's a lot of work and focus on some homeless various homeless operations across the state. Ponnevo, Waimeaalo and Prospect Street area. Again, on paper, it doesn't look too flattering, but as a state agency, there's every single homeless operation. There's a minimum of three touches in which the department has to go and do. The initial one is we have to go and scout locate the various locations of the camps. And then we have to make sure that outreach is provided to every individual there. The next touch would be issuing the legal notices informing them that we're going to do a cleanup operation and in which any property left will be abandoned or disposed. And the last obviously is the removal action. And the other big thing that we focused on this past month, we did a two-day operation on Molokai in which we're looking for vacant parcels again to with a focus on helping to address the waitlist. During the two days, we identified, we actually no, we visited 107 parcels. 71 of those parcels are leased out with no improvements. 17 are leased with structures, but the structures appear vacant. And then 19 are in our inventory. So the next step now is we have to go reach out to the ones that are leased out. Try to figure out what's going on, assess the situation, see if there's any resources the department can go. Offer them, see if there's anybody that wants to surrender and get it back into inventory. And again, hopefully that we can help address the waitlist in some capacity. And again, we continue to go focus in on our beneficiary engagement. Again, with our monthly reach out to 73 total recipients. So commissioners, if you guys do have anybody, community leaders, associations that you feel should be added, just please let me know and I'll make sure that we add that to our monthly list. Any questions?
Yeah, one beneficiary, Kapua Kamai.
Oh, cool.
Kapua, C Y.
Aloha.
Good to see you.
Ovaupuakili ikuakamai. Nukaaina ho opula pulaka avaava Wainai Maiau. Mahalo for being here. Welcome to be one of our commissioners. I spoke with Brother outside because in Wainai Valley Homestead, we have multiple homes that have been abandoned for far too long, for years, which is hazardous to the community. Because we don't know who these squatters are. One, we don't know if they're squatters or not because we don't know the situation of the house. Two, if we do know the situation of the house, we're wondering when is it going to be turned over to the successor, to a transferee, or to a new lessie? The worst thing that we hate to see is when it is occupied by squatters. Whether they be beneficiary eligible or not, they are not legally on the property, which makes that property very dangerous to the neighbors. There's no accountability to the community. There's no communication with the community. I've heard personal stories to where immediate neighbors have been vandalized, have suffered theft, have suffered threats, have considered violence. But we shouldn't have to come to this type of situation. The department needs to do a better job about rectifying these situations. One, we hate to lose a lessie. Our prince desired for us to be there. The original lessie did their job. Things happen. Hard times fall upon us. We cannot control things. And so we always ask the commissioners and the department to work with the beneficiaries that are willing to work with you righteously, not in a phony way, as in to say, I'm going to do this and not do it. So I just implore upon the department and you commissioners to help our enforcement team, to help our housing, wan folks them, to do their jobs, to get the next beneficiary in there. While the house is still the house that it was when the first occupants left it. Because years later, that house is a shell that is a debt to the new lessie. Because oftentimes when we offer that house up to the next person, it's in an as-is condition. So from the outside, we see a shell. But on the inside, you cannot imagine the plumbing, the electrical, the structural type of damages that has occurred, which incurs significant debt to this new family that wants to move in. So I just implore upon you folks to help the enforcement, to help the housing, to help all of our staffers to come in and expedite the process in a peaceful and meaningful manner. Mahalo.
Thank you very much. Any other... Shentel?
A Shenau.
Oh, Shenau. Excuse me.
Aloha, commissioners. To Kapua's point, I just want to offer HCL's products to you folks that if we do see homes that are in that condition and like she's saying, it becomes a burden on the next lessie. That HCL has renovation and repair loans that act as a mortgage loan where we could tear it down. We have funding that can tear it down. We have the resources to help them rebuild affordable based on whatever their budget is. And so I just want to offer that up as a resource that we can partner in something like this. Mahalo.
It's Jusai. I mean, you know, I mean, is Loka in Ulmba? That's source of money? I'm not sure, but I'll get that information. Any questions from the commissioners?
Not, thank you, David. Okay, next item, D1, HSD status report, the loans.
Good afternoon, Chair, members of the commission. Wan Garcia, Homestead Services Division Administrator. D1 is for information only, which includes Exhibit A, homestead lease and application totals and monthly activity reports. Exhibit B is the loan delinquency report. Exhibit C is the department guarantees for FHA construction loans. Available for any questions, but I just want to highlight some items with respect to Exhibit A, homestead lease and application.
Reports submitted since our last update is fifty-six and total number of reports submitted in the calendar year is one hundred and seventy-six. And in addition to that, we sent out eight official correspondences to our beneficiaries regarding some type of ongoing investigation. During this timeframe, there's a lot of work and focus on some homeless, various homeless operations across the state, Panaeva, Waimea Nalo and Prospect Street area. Again, on paper, it doesn't look too flattering, but as a state agency, there's every single homeless operation, there's a minimum of three touches in which the department has to go and do. The initial one is we have to go and scout, locate the various locations of the camps, and then we have to make sure that outreach is provided to every individual there. The next touch would be issuing the legal notices informing them that we're going to do a cleanup operation and in which any property left will be abandoned or disposed. And the last obviously is the removal action. And the other big thing that we focused on this past month, we did a two-day operation on Molokai in which we're looking for vacant parcels, again, to with a focus on helping to address the waitlist. During the two days, we identified, we actually no, we visited a hundred and seven parcels. Seventy-one of those parcels are leased out with no improvements. Seventeen are leased with structures, but the structures appear vacant, and then nineteen are in our inventory. So the next step now is we have to go reach out to the ones that are leased out, try to figure out what's going on, assess the situation, see if there's any resources the department can go, offer them, see if there's anybody that wants to surrender and get it back into inventory. And again, hopefully that we can help address the waitlist in some capacity. And again, we continue to go focus in on our beneficiary engagement, again, with our monthly reach out to seventy-three total recipients. So commissioners, if you guys do have anybody, community leaders, associations that you feel should be added, just please let me know and I'll make sure that we add that to our monthly list. Any questions?
Yeah, one beneficiary, Kopua Kamai.
Oh, cool.
See one.
Aloha.
Good to see you.
O'wau Kapua, I, it's been o'wau. O'wau Kapua kili ikoa kamai, no ka aina ho opula pulaka'ava va'ainai mai au. Mahalo for being here. Welcome to be one of our commissioners. I spoke with Brother outside because in Waimea Valley Homestead, we have multiple homes that have been abandoned for far too long, for years, which is hazardous to the community. Because we don't know who these squatters are. Well, one, we don't know if they're squatters or not because we don't know the situation of the house. Two, if we do know the situation of the house, we're wondering when is it going to be turned over to the successor, to a transferee, or to a new lessie? The worst thing that we hate to see is when it is occupied by squatters. Whether they be beneficiary eligible or not, they are not legally on the property, which makes that property very dangerous to the neighbors. There's no accountability to the community. There's no communication with the community. I've heard personal stories to where immediate neighbors have been vandalized, have suffered theft, have suffered threats, have considered violence. But we shouldn't have to come to this type of situation. The department needs to do a better job about rectifying these situations. One, we hate to lose a lessie. Our prince desired for us to be there. The original lessie did their job. Things happen. Hard times fall upon us. We cannot control things. And so we always ask the commissioners and the department to work with the beneficiaries that are willing to work with you righteously, not, not in a phony way, as in to say, I'm going to do this and not do it. So I just implore upon the department and you commissioners to help our enforcement team, to help our housing, Wan folks them, to do their jobs, to get the next beneficiary in there, while the house is still the house that it was when the first occupants left it. Because years later, that house is a shell that is a debt to the new lessie. Because oftentimes when we offer that house up to the next person, it's in an as-is condition. So from the outside, we see a shell. But on the inside, you cannot imagine the plumbing, the electrical, the structural type of damages that has occurred, which incurs significant debt to this new family that wants to move in. So I just implore upon you folks to help the enforcement, to help the housing, to help all of our staffers to come in and expedite the process in a peaceful and meaningful manner. Mahalo.
Thank you very much. Any other, Shantel?
Chanel.
Oh, Chanel, excuse me.
Aloha commissioners. To Kopua's point, I just want to offer HCL's products to you folks that if we do see homes that are in that condition and like she's saying, it becomes a burden on the next lessie, that HCL has renovation and repair loans that act as a mortgage loan where we could tear it down. We have funding that can tear it down. We have the resources to help them rebuild, affordable based on whatever their budget is. And so I just want to offer that up as a resource that we can partner in something like this. Mahalo.
It's just I mean, you know, I mean, is Loka in Ulmba? That source of money? I'm not sure, but I'll go get that information. Any questions from the commissioners?
Not, thank you, David. Okay, next item, D1, HSD status report, the loans.
Good afternoon Chair, members of the commission. Juan Garcia, Homestead Services Division Administrator. D1 is for information only, which includes Exhibit A, homestead lease and application totals and monthly activity reports. Exhibit B is the loan delinquency report. Exhibit C is the department guarantees for FHA construction loans. Available for any questions, but I just want to highlight some items with respect to Exhibit A, homestead lease and application totals and monthly activity reports. We currently have ten thousand ninety-eight lessies of record. This will increase as you voted on new project lease awards as those project leases gets recorded, those will be reflected subsequently in these reports forthcoming. Applications branch has currently forty-seven thousand four hundred twenty-nine applications, which represent twenty-nine thousand six hundred and ten applicants. Again, as you know, an applicant may apply for residence as well as either agriculture or pastoral. Item B is the loan delinquency report. We've been steady at about twenty-four, twenty-five percent with respect to the dollar amount. The delinquency total reduced by point five as compared to last month. We're currently at twenty-four point one, which has decreased from twenty-four point six. Just a little bit of information with regard to the loan services branch. To focus on the loan delinquency, staff has been divided into two focus groups. One is the lending aspect of the operation as, and the second focus group is tasked to address the loan delinquency, which will most likely end up with additional contested case hearing before this body. Again, the contested case hearing is a result of the staff exhausting its effort with regards to the collection of delinquent or defaulted borrowers. Exhibit C is a issuance of a guarantee for the construction of a new home on a lessie that resides in Kalmano, Big Island. Again, I can respond to any questions that you may have at this time.
I want.
Mr. Lusua.
Yeah, I, question I had earlier was that I noticed the delinquency itself is, is high in certain areas like the six-month delinquency, which is a hundred eighty days delinquent. And I know we don't want to take these guys off if they're six months delinquent, but at the same time, what efforts are we making to either help these beneficiaries or how we're handling the issues?
Yeah, thank you Commissioner. This is Dean with the loan services branch. He's the manager again with respect to the loan delinquency. There's a couple of stages with respect to those that are in the hundred and eighty days. There are several that have already been taken to the commission for contested case hearing. The commission's decision, decision and order is pending. We should be receiving those shortly from the deputy AG's office. There's also accounts that have already gone through the contested case hearing process. The commission rendered its decision and order, and the lessie is expected to comply with the repayment plan as established by the, by the commission's decision and order. There are certain cases that may have defaulted on the repayment plan. So we are currently evaluating those cases and if necessary, we'll be coming forward to you to make the decision to possibly cancel or retire that lease. We are, again, like I said, we've been tasked to address the delinquency. There's staff that's been appointed specifically to focus on the collection efforts and I think then Dean can further provide information with regards to that effort.
Afternoon Chair, good afternoon Commissioners, Dean O'Shuro, Loan Services Branch. So Commissioner, to kind of answer your question, the reason for the number of these accounts in the one eighty day category, as you know, the staff is trying to work with these lessies as much as possible, exhaust all efforts before we come to the commission. And this includes doing payment plans with the lessies. So, but while the department is working on a payment plan, these lessies stay in this category. They do not get to move to a current, current status and what have you until such time that we are able to refinance it, or if they come in within the means to get financial assistance from our nonprofit partners to bring their account current. So that's kind of the dilemma we're stuck with that when they sit in these delinquent, seriously delinquent category, until we've exhausted all efforts, it's difficult to bring a case to the commission to actually want to cancel someone's lease, right? So that, that's where we are.
Yeah, the, the reason I asked is because when I look at the hundred eighty days, it's like over fifty percent of the total delinquency loans. And I know, I know we're trying to help the beneficiaries, but at the same time, we're defeating the purpose of us helping them. And that's the reason I was trying to see what else we could do for these beneficiaries. I mean, I'm not questioning the process you guys are using and we going to, what do you call that? Besides charging them off and, you know, I just don't, I just don't know how much, I mean, you guys are bending backwards helping these guys, I know that. But it's just that for a hundred eighty days, there's like a hundred fifty-one cases that's on the hundred.
Yeah, again, it, it's the, unfortunately, we've discovered that borrowers that are seriously delinquent come to their senses, so to speak, when they come before you. And better late than never, but there's been a lot of effort by staff to get to that point. And it's not unusual for, for the lessie or the borrower to react in that manner. It, it's, they finally come to the realization that after staff has been advising them or, or warning them that lease cancellation, lease retirement is highly possible, but it's not until that borrower, defaulted borrower faces you eye to eye, and basically the status of their lease is in your hands. And again, we've, speaking on behalf of the hardworking staff of loan services branch, they've exhausted their efforts. They've gone through the, the financial counseling. So with a, no other option but to come before you, to make that tough decision, to either give them one last opportunity or retire their lease. And like I said, sometimes it's that situation in which the lessie finally realizes, recognizes the situation that they've put themselves in.
Yeah, Commissioner Lusua, let me just add to Juan's response. One of the things that I've come to realize is that, you know, if you let borrowers, I guess, entertain an attitude that, well, these other guys are not paying, so I don't need to pay, that, that can be very contagious. And so one of the things that I've made very, very clear is that we need, especially based on the fact that we're doing so many new leases and issuing so many new loans that we kind of have that, you know, because not only did the revolving of these funds and, you know, redistributing the proceeds for, for new loans are real key that, and based upon people paying their mortgages, as well as our lenders, as well as we do a tax credit program, you know, people got to pay their rent or mortgage. And so one of the things that I noticed that, yeah, there, there is a lot of delinquencies. And so what we're trying to do, and we've reorganized our loans branch and separated the origination teams, so to speak, versus the collection team. And so I've identified people in the loans branch that are, I think, more suitable for working with existing borrowers and, you know, have that people skills that is really needed, not only to communicate, but kind of fashion some kind of repayment plan, or let them know, you know, we're starting to get serious. Besides reorganizing, as well as bringing on new individuals to the program, we're also using sales force to expedite the notice process. And then when we send out notices, we're going to send it across the board, and then with the responses, we can survey, figure out which ones are more serious about trying to work with us versus those that are malingers and, you know, they're just playing the system. And so Juan is correct. When we start getting serious with them and actually take them to a contested case hearing, or the threat of a contested case hearing, they're a lot more responsive. But I'd have to admit that this is a bad reflection on the department's administering these existing loans. And so we need to, I don't want to get these in order, but we need to get more active. That's why we look at third-party service providers that have the, I guess, resources besides an understanding of the different loan products, as well as, you know, maybe have a physical presence on some of the outer islands that we don't have regarding the people that are going to provide the service, especially if it's reorganizing and reconstituting a loan. So we are trying to get a lot more aggressive, but I can't stress the importance that it's, it works both, both ways. Now, we're not trying to be heartless about the process, but we do have to kind of run it like a business, but this, this is a rehabilitation process. So that's where the counseling comes in. And that's why, especially on our new awards, it's a mandatory requirement that you, if you want to get a homestead lease, depending on what category you're in, you got to go through a workshop so you understand what it is having a loan, what your responsibilities are. If you're going through a tax credit approach with the option of purchase, you got to know that there's certain restrictions on who can be in your household. You have to certify your income. You got to be available for inspections on a regular basis. And so it, it's all involves educating, but also the responsibility on the side of our beneficiaries. It's not a freebie. It's a process that, you know, comes with responsibility and kuliana. And so that's where it's really dependent upon our staff to have the skill set, and that's why we're also getting into training. And we've expanded our loan products, not only in Ahaza, but we also have our direct loans. So we also have a way community lending that has their loan products that we can use and present, but in a way that, you know, we're finding solutions. We're not continuing to see our delinquency rates increase. And as sure as hell, I don't want to see, especially our, our new recipients, our new homesteaders, get kind of comfortable or have an attitude that, oh, we don't need to pay because the department's not going to come after us, that we cannot have. So it's, I can understand your concern, Commissioner. We are adjusting that.
Yeah, thank you Chair. As far as Dean and Juan, I mean, you know, you guys are doing a great job. It's just that my forty years in, in a financial institution, this is one of the highest things that I worked on, was trying to relieve the delinquency. And I understand Chair, you know, we're here to help our beneficiaries, but there's got to be some kind of plan, like you say, in trying to alleviate the problem. So I'm glad you guys are working as much as you can on this. Thank you very much.
Yeah, let me, let me also add that it's not just about loans. We're also looking at, you know, the association assessments. We're also, we've separated lease violations and tasked enforcement with going through the contested case process and notice, collection of the data, as well as informing them of violation. Because one of the things that is, makes a community really undesirable is when you have all these junk cars all over the place, you got people dealing drugs and, you know, just partying hearty and, you know, with disrespect to their neighbors. So one of the other things, and we're bringing in more enforcement guys, is to monitor that. And if so, if necessary, enforcement will proceed with a contested case hearing approach. So that's the other area that we're also working on. Any other, any other questions, Commissioner? Commissioner?
Thank you so much. Just for the sake of this discussion, can you explain to me what happens when there are thirty days delinquent? Is it a letter in the mail?
Yeah, so the first step is actually to try and contact our lessies by telephone. The phone call is the first step. If that's unsuccessful, then there is a mail that, a letter that's sent out. If there's still no response, our loan officers do actually go out and do field visits, site visits, and we actually knock on doors. Oahu as well as Neighbor Island, some of the commissioners have seen us out there in their communities knocking on doors. That is the last step. We, we don't like to visit them, but unfortunately, there's no correspondence, there's no communication that really gives us as staff a justification when it comes to the commission to show that we've exhausted all our efforts by even knocking on doors, if that's what we have to do.
And what would you say would be the conversion rate from someone who's delinquent to then current? What, about what percentage?
Probably a fifty percent. So again, not every case is going to be successful, right? And not every case is, is the total failure. But to keep working with these lessies, within roughly about fifty percent will convert to eventually a good status. Then the others will either end up being canceled or they end up selling it, or something happens with a, maybe through a successorship issue, they might pass and then have to pass it on to their successors. That's, not all of them will lead to cancellation of the fifty, it just will convert to another person or another process.
All right, thank you.
There is another tool that the department uses and, you know, some of the lessies are seriously delinquent. There's just no way that they can catch up the tens of thousands of dollars that they're backed. The loan services branch with the approval of this commission allows for a borrower who's in default that has paid twelve consecutive months to refinance their loan, which will render them current once it's refinanced. So that's part of the success rate that, again, working with the families to stick to the repayment plan. And, you know, I need to plead to the borrowers that put themselves in that situation. Again, they need to dispel or, or put aside shame. In Hawaii, we don't like bring our dirty laundry in front of anybody, even our families. But sometimes it's the family, those close relatives that can help. We've seen too many times when the lease is to the point where there's no return, lease is canceled, then the family members come in and it's too late. So we encourage those borrowers that are defaulted, speak to the family. Family members, ask the lessie, what's the status of the loan? Because that will go a long way in saving some of these situations.
Okay, we have a couple testifiers, Kopua? Okay, what about Chanel?
Aloha again. Also wanted to let you folks know as a resource, HCL was just recently contracted to provide the homeowner assistance program with Lehuah, with Nahazda, using Nahazda funding. We are working to develop the program right now, and the program is set to launch on October first, and this would be to help those who are eighty percent AMI and below get current. And the funding will also help provide assistance to do workout plans as well with our servicing department. So mahalo.
You know, Chanel, I gotta kind of put you on notice. One of the things that we've been really stressing is sales force, use of sales force.
Yep, we're in discovery right now.
Okay, good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else? Any other questions or comments? Okay, thank you.
Thank you Commissioners. Thank you, Commissioner Lusua. Thank you.
Okay, E5? Next agenda item, E5, for information only, updates of awards schedule 2026. Kalani?
Aloha Chair Watson and Commissioners. For the record, Kalani Franda, Acting Administrator. Aloha Chair Watson and Commissioners. For the record, Kalani Franda, Acting Administrator for the Land Development Division. What you see in front of you is basically summary of our schedule for fiscal year 2026, which starts on July 1st, 2025, ends in June 30th, 2026. At the very beginning, the first slide, next slide please. This really just captures final words from Prince Kuhiu and it really was, as we stick together and really takes a village. It takes many hands and many of us to be able to deliver a schedule so that has roughly about 2,000 awards that we will be doing in about 12 months. And it also takes a massive village for us to be able to deliver the type of projects that we're working on. Next slide, please. The next several slides are really to provide you information in regards to the type of numbers that we've been working with as Juan had mentioned, roughly about 10,000 leases are current, that we currently have. This does not include the project leases that we are implementing. So that's 10,000 leases over a period of 10 years. And you've been hearing that. We are making major strides in this. And next slide, please. Much of our funding is going towards developing infrastructure. And we are taking raw land, doing everything from developing the water system. That means everything that a water system is required to have. Wastewater system, roadways, power, et cetera. With intent of moving this being up to code. So we can move this over to the municipalities' management of these public facilities and public areas. Next slide, please. Oh, actually, can you go back to this? I just want to say kudos to our county governments, as well as our state agencies and federal government agencies that have been working with us for funding, for permitting processes, for expediting some of the areas that they've seen that we need to move quickly. They've been providing us advanced water credits, et cetera. So just want to say mahalo to all of those different agencies. Next slide, please. Want to just reiterate once again, there is a new approach. We are at the tail end of the previous approach, which meant that we develop and our beneficiaries need to pre-qualify in order to get into these homes. The new approach is we go through and we actually issue out these project leases. We do financial assessments with them. And then we work with our developers to build based upon what these beneficiaries can afford. Big change, big pivot. And this is the way we're moving forward on it. It really provides, and here's the process that we are going through. Once again, it's really providing resources to our beneficiaries to let them know that we're going to walk you through all the way to the end. We also have different options that they can choose from. And this will really, oh, next slide, please. And these options really will are fashioned to be able to meet the needs of our beneficiaries. So you will see turnkey homes for those that can qualify for those turnkey homes. You will see self-help housing for those that need those types of resources and need those types of, I want to say, I'll just say, resources in general. And then you also have those that have the resource to enter into owner builder lots and be able to take on that large construction loan. That huge deposit that they need to be able to move forward this project. And some of them, you know, they have the resources to understand the permit process. Not everybody does. And that's one of the reasons why you've heard HCL come forward and share that they have these types of resources that we could be able to utilize and they can walk our beneficiaries through on these owner builder lots. And once again, with our, the access that we have with the Nahazda funding and our Nahazda unit, that provides amazing, amazing funding that we've never seen, that you'll never, ever see, but for our beneficiaries to benefit from. We also have rent with option to purchase. And this, we've, you know, I've seen, we've seen testimonies, one after another, for some of these people, young family, family of five, all they know was living in an apartment. Couldn't afford anything else because they're in a gap group. A gap group that they couldn't afford a turnkey house, but they couldn't qualify for the rent with option to purchase. Unfortunate things happened. The owner of the company that the father had worked for was going to sell their company. And he started to lower and lessen the hours. Well, this allowed for this family to qualify for Lytec housing. And they were like, I want to say, when the guy counted how many people were in front of him and how many houses were left, there's no way he was going to get anything. But it took a lot of prayer before, during, and amazingly enough, he got awarded a four-bedroom house, three-bath for his family. They're paying rents around 600 right now, because that's all they can afford. And they live in a brand-new house. Those are testimonies that we've been hearing over and over again. So once again, I just want to state, we're moving forward with a new direction. And that new direction is based upon what can the beneficiary afford. And that's the way the development is being programmed. We have, next slide, please. Just want to highlight, and these are one of the areas that we're working with our other divisions to be able to deliver. And that is the 50% of the applicants are over the age of 65. We are looking at kupuna housing. And you'll hear that in a number of different proposals, a number of different subject matters that have come forth, is how do we provide for our kupuna? And so this is really key for us. Once again, looking at not only residential, but agriculture and pastoral. Some of these, we haven't seen for decades, awards of agricultural lots, and you see them happening now. So I'd like to just go forth, not to dive deep, next slide, please. Not to dive deep into these, but just more just to give you an awareness of where these awards are happening in your particular areas. And also to also share with the public, as well as our elected officials, these areas are coming to your districts. So July 12th, we had done an orientation regarding the Maui Agricultural Project Lease. And that's for Waifu Maoka and Honokawai. July 19th, which was last Saturday, we went to Pilani Maki Kai, did a workshop for those that were waiting, and that's about 13 lots there. On August 2nd, we're going to go to Lanaii. And we're going to share with them an orientation of 75 lots that we're doing there. And that will exhaust the waitlist for that island. August 23rd, we're going to come back to Oahu, Kolo Kahi 2C. And do a lot, or next slide, please. And do a lot selection for 115 lots. And our staff across the board, with all the different divisions, have been working hard on the pre-qualifications of these. And I just want to say mahalo to those that are in loans, that are in Nahazda, that are in HSD on the work that they're doing, as well as LDD and housing. Next slide, please. Move over to Maui. And this is going to be one of our bigger ones, and I'm going to share the number with you later. Maui Residential Project Lease Orientation is going to be for four of the residential projects on Maui. And you see them here on the slides. Waifu Maoka, Waifu single family, which is almost in a sense Pu'ona Phase 3, because it's right above Pu'ona. Leali in West Maui and Kamalani in Central. At the end of the month, in September, we're going to do a selection for the Maui Agricultural Project leases. 105 leases that we will be issuing out for Waifu Maoka, Honokawai. The, next slide, please. Oh, yes, so you can stay here. In October, going back to Maui. And Maui scattered lots for the divided interest lessees. This is in Hikina, and then we have one in Paku Kalo. So about 11 total there. On the 18th, we are doing a workshop, Waipoli Rent With Option To Purchase. I just also want to say, and here we also have an interpreter that can interpret for Lelohawaii specifically with Ni'ao Dainet. And we also have, at the end of the month in October, we're also going to be doing a workshop with, for the rent with option to purchase, Hanapipe. And same program that we're going to be doing here, but for this particular project. Thank you. Next slide is states. November 1st, we're back in Lanaii. And this is where we're going to work with and just be able to issue out and exhaust the entire list. And looking at doing about 75 there. This is really key for us because there's a lot of momentum happening in the County of Maui in regards to this particular project and the project that the county is doing right next to it. So very key for us to be able to move forward on it. November 8th, we have the Maui Residential Project Lease Selection. This is 581 leases for the four projects. And I will share a part two with you that'll come up shortly afterwards. November 15th, we have the Waipoli Rent With Option To Purchase selection, that's 80, that's going to take place. December 13th, we have the Maui Residential Project Lease Selection 2. And this will exhaust and allow for us to provide the remaining 550 leases for these four projects. Note, these are, these are large volumes of leases. So it really takes us time to process, not only from administrative standpoint, but also from a legal standpoint as well. Turning to 2026, in January, we're going to be issuing out a selection for the Hanapipe Rent With Option To Purchase, that's 80. January 24th, we're doing an orientation for Laopua Village 4 Emma. This area is already completely done with infrastructure. We're just ready to go vertical. February 7th, next slide, please. We have Panava Residential Project Lease Orientation. And on February 21st, Honumu Phase 2 Agricultural Project Lease Orientation. March 7th, go back to Maui, doing an orientation for Maui Agricultural Project Lease. Ulehu Nui, an area that's been on the books for a while. And we're moving forward on project leases. Also moving forward on the next phase of Honokawai Phase 2. March 21st, Laopua Village 4, issuing out 125 lots for slot selection in this area. Next slide, please. April 11th, going back to Honumu. And actually, we, on that particular one, I apologize for that, we are actually doing a issuance of leases. So we're going to be doing the actually lease selection on that. April 18th, we have the Panava Residential Project leases. We're actually going to be issuing out 600 leases at this time on April 18th. May 2nd, Maui Agricultural Project leases. We have 140 leases that we're going to be issuing out at this time. And then Commissioner Lasua, Molokai Residential Scattered Lots Orientation. We have Naiva and Halehua scattered lots. June 6th, next slide. And this will kind of wrap us, wrap up our awards schedule for fiscal year 26. June 6th, West Oahu Residential Project Lease Orientation for Eva Beach and Nanakuli. I'm going to leave that as a surprise for you guys and share with you later on what these numbers entail and what particular areas these are, but you can take a look at the slide there. June 20th, Molokai Residential Scattered Lots. And that'll be 36 that we're going to be issuing out, Naiva Halehua scattered lots. That wraps up our schedule for fiscal year 26. Thank you very much. And open for any questions that you may have.
Thank you so much for this presentation. I just have two quick questions. One is, is there, I did not see in the budget the numbers to the Waipoli project? Did I miss that?
No, you did not.
Okay.
It's actually going to be, it's not in our Land Development Division budget. There's some work that's being done on the Nahazda side.
Okay, and second question was about the Anahola Kuliana project?
Yes. That's going to come in fiscal year 27, so at the end of calendar year 26.
Okay, thank you.
So most likely, you'll see it on the July, July of 2026. But you will see it next year for sure.
I just had a question about the comment earlier about scattered lots and bringing that back onto the books. What does that schedule look like?
So that's been interesting because our scattered lots have 1Zs and 2Zs all over the place. And so it's not as easy to get all of the different waitlists and you make them excited, usually one or two. So we've been going to the waitlist based upon who's next. For example, we have a couple of them that came up in Kapole. We're going through that. Some of them came up in Kona, kind of going through that. So making these, what the awards team is doing is making phone calls, who's next on the list. Calling them, saying this is available and would you like to purchase it? So there, we're moving on that. You're going to hear some of, one of them that will be awarded in Papukalea. You'll hear that tonight when we share out our report for Land Development Division.
Hey Kalani, thank you for the presentation. So Panava is a 600.
Yes.
How many Honumu Phase 2?
Fifth, I believe it was 50.
50?
Yeah.
So I pass by every once in a while on Phase 1. I don't see no activity up there.
We are working with, very diligently with HELCO. There is a, where we need to energize it, and that part hasn't flipped the switch yet.
Oh, if you need help with HELCO, let me know.
Oh, we'll do. Thank you. Appreciate it. Right after this. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks. Kapua?
Sign up for everything.
Okay, the next item, F5, for information-only, Status of the Kapole Regional Homestead Community Benefits Agreement.
Aloha and good afternoon, Commissioners. Khan Albinho again. Item number F5 is for information only. It's the status of the Kapole Regional Homestead Community Benefit Agreement is funded separately and conditioned by the general, through General East Number 276, which is issued to Kapole, Hawaii Property Company LLC in Kapole, Oahu Island, subject TMK as listed. Yep, sorry. I did provide a written submittal. I hope you guys saw through it or read through it. We also have our KCDC team here, President from KCDC, Michelle Kohane, who would also like to come up and present some of her testimony on this.
Aloha Chair and Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity. Your written, my written testimony is in front of you, so I'm not going to read that. But I do want to just walk through some of the talking points. And I think you had a good peek into community benefits. Some things that work and some things that don't work. So I think what I want to take away from that conversation and articulate to you is that KCDC, I want to acknowledge first some of our board members who are in the audience. And Tijome, who's one of the founders of KCDC from its very beginning. And also Chantel Li'i Ho'omalu, who is our first hired staff, that we have an executive director at KCDC. Several months ago, we were in front of you to ask for an extension of the land here in the area in the Kipuka. We currently manage a facility, the Kapole Heritage Center, with two classrooms and a commercial kitchen. And we're now currently renting our outdoor space as we prepare for phases 2. And we're now currently renting our outdoor space as we prepare for Phases Two and Three. The question of the Community Benefits Agreement is one that you will continue to hear as Commissioners, because every community sees it somewhere different. Uh, earlier you heard about a community that's not sure when their meetings are happening, who's on their board. And I can tell you confidently, we hold regular meetings, um, and have had forum for five or more consecutive years, those happen monthly. And then we have quarterly meetings where we ask all of our homestead leaders to come together. That quarterly holiwa is actually happening this coming Saturday on the twenty-sixth. We have the opposite issue. We have a member of a community here in Kanihili who doesn't want to participate. It's not because we're not meeting, it's not because we're not talking about where the community benefits is going. It's because we have a board that represents Kanihili who chooses not to participate. So I want this body to be very clear that everybody, every community's situation is different. What I laid out in my testimony is that we have been receiving a hundred and forty-four thousand plus dollars from the Debardele Agreement that is with DHHL. And that helps to support our communities collectively. Kaupea, Maluohai, Kaulua, Kahai, and Kanihili. That, those dollars, about forty-six percent of that money off the top supports the Heritage Center, the lights to go on, the electricity to get paid, the water and, and the usage and the maintenance of our facility. And then the balance gets split five ways by each of the homestead associations and KCDC. So fifteen thousand plus dollars per homestead and KCDC gets distributed uh, each year. For, we just had a recent increase, which is why this conversation's coming, that Debardele had a step up in their rent to DHHL, which means we get a step up in our community benefits package of about thirty, if thirty-one thousand nine twenty-six, which will increase. We will spread that evenly across the five entities serving this region. So each entity will get twenty-one thousand eight forty-two and forty cents. So I just wanted to be super clear about how this community benefits package is being distributed. Um, we have a lot of conversation about why KCDC, um, how come we're not getting money from Ho'omaka? So KCDC went through the DHHL process at the time, which was called Kulia Ikanuu. We became certified as the regional CDC, and which is why we're the recipient of that community benefits uh, agreement. We have had some pushback from the Kanihili Board, who, like I said, they don't agree. They would like to get their dollars directly from DHHL. And we are perfectly fine with that. If DHHL would like to send their twenty-one thousand eight forty-two directly to them, and you audit them, and you check that their expenses are being paid for accordingly, we're happy to do that. Uh, we do it now because some of the associations choose to have a five oh one C three, some don't. KCDC has it, we take the money, we make them invoice us, we pay them out, and then we ask for how did you spend the money, because that's what we report to DHHL. But if an association would like to be responsible for that on their own, that's what self-governance is all about, we're all about it. We're happy to sign a letter in agreement with Kanihili that says, have DHHL pay you directly, and then you be responsible for keeping your own receipts to explain to DHHL if and when that happens. Um, so I'll ask your, I'll answer any of your questions, I think there have been recent evol- uh, evolving questions. The last thing I'll say is that with regards to Ho'omaka, part of the Kulia Ikanuu program back then said that we would have a parcel of land for community use. That's the Heritage Center, that's what we're doing now. Um, and then we're starting to raise money for Phases Two and Three, where we will have a, a meeting, a gathering place, kinda like Waimanalo, that can be rented out for our um, parties and what have you. So right now, we're just renting out an outdoor space. The revenue that we generate from Ho'omaka, which is nearly, it's about a half a million dollars in lease rent, was from the revenue generating parcel that was awarded to KCDC at that time. That's not part of the community benefit, that is for us to pay for the expenses in the long run and to construct Phase Two and Three. I will tell this body that once that happens, and there are more community benefits that can be broadly shared across the homesteads, we're more than willing to have that conversation. But right now, the community benefit is covering expenses for the Heritage Center that can be used by all of the four homestead communities. And then it gets evenly split after the, after covering those expenses. So I will entertain any questions if you have them, and I believe there are other people here to testify on the matter.
What'd you bring up to others that wanna testify?
Who else wants to testify? Auntie Homie? Uncle Sunny? So Auntie Homie serves as our board member, and then Uncle Sunny is our treasurer.
Aloha Chair and members of the Commission, and welcome. Uh, Commissioner Nellis, uh, you're starting to even out the table here in terms of representation of um, our ladies. Um, Ekalamai, I wanna pass this out, I'll start with um, and so you can pass it along to take a look at. And um, Michelle has provided her testimony to you, she's done a very um, distinct and appropriate testimony. And I wasn't sure if I'd speak before you, but after this morning, I think it's important to understand that um, we've worked very, very hard. And I'm very proud of the past and present, and I hope the um, the future board members that will sit. It's really important to note that from the very beginning, when we approached the department, and Micah said, um, we have land for community and we have land for commercial. Commercial land will help support the community land. We don't have money, but you guys have to do the work and you have to work hard. And that is what we've tried to do. And with the help of Kulia Ikanuu, that has been the part of our foundation. And so what you have before you is what R E D has done in terms of promoting community engagement. The postcards that you have is mailed to every resident in all four homesteads. And there are, at the end, a few postcards that are mailed only to Malu- Maluohai residents because it is the programs or projects that Maluohai does for our two hundred and twenty-six lessees. But this information I'm sharing with you because I think it's important that you know that we have a variety of programs. Ukalele, olaloha'ahi, hula. Um, and in partnership with Papua Koleas a few years ago, we did a health study that was also sent out to every home in our Aho Pua. And as a result of that, we have uh, two programs called Ikehula and Pilayina. I can assure this Commission that the work that we do, and even when we're holding meetings, um, that we understand that we serve every lessie and their families here in our Aho Pua. We don't represent, and when anyone says that they're representing this homestead, I instinctively and immediately correct them. Because we do not represent our homesteads, we serve our homesteads, that's the difference. And so I thank you for this time, and um, I need those postcards back, cuz they're mine. Well, you can pass them all the way down.
That's only for looking, not keeping.
Commissioners, Sunny Delto, I'm the treasurer for KCDC. I just wanted to input the part, um, because one of the things that I'd be personally, if you go out where the area is right now, we have a beautiful backdrop. It's called all of the plants that surround the area. I've introduced Ipu actually to help that, because one of the things we wanna make sure is the community is comfortable when they come. And I will tell you, because I'm there practically every day, whoever comes enjoys looking at the plant growth, the things that are around them. And I think that's important to help set some of the conditions. I am a Kanihili uh, person, I was on the Kanihili Board, I actually asked to come. And the reason why is, we started trying to embrace this self-determination thing, which is great, except that that means you need to step on your own way. That's bring some change and made some frustrations between KCDC and Kanihili. But this helped us to grow, and I think that's the part that we need to realize is, as different communities grow, just like how we're looking at all of these new upcoming communities, they're gonna have bright ideas. How are we gonna contain that? And, and I appreciate you folks looking at, hey, you know, things are changing. And so when those different communities come, these are some of the things that we're gonna have to wrestle with. And I think that's great, because now is the time to do that. Now is the time, just like how they're talking about the different types of homes and loans, the different type of people that we're gonna bring onboard. And so we're gonna need to be able to entertain them and all. Understand that you guys as the Commissioners will be able to do some of that stuff for us, uh, so that we can change the mold and make how the Hawaiian homes actually looks and operates a lot better than where we're at. Appreciate you guys' opportunity, thank you.
Aloha, my name is Chantel, Kili'ho'omalu. Um, I didn't prepare testimony, just wanted to add to the conversation, my introduction. I'm the executive director, I'm also a resident here in Kanihili. Um, but I am also available if you have any questions. Um, I think everybody's covered a lot of ground here. Serving community is complex and hard work. And KCDC has put a lot of time and effort into making sure that there's voices at the table from each community. We continue to leave that door open, it's been challenging um, at different turns, um, with not everybody participating. But we try our best to be fair and responsive, and we've made a lot of changes in the last few years based on those requests. Um, and at the end of the day, that it just keeps being a moving target. And um, we continue to pursue and leave that door open.
I'm just gonna close us out by saying this, that Prince Kuhiel had a vision to return our people to ouraina. And regardless of any disagreements, any pilikia that happens in community, I want this body to know that KCDC is lucky to be living Kuhiel's dream. That we have been on theaina, we are now lessees, not waitlisters. Um, so we see ourselves with Kuleana to help the department and help our residents be able to have a healthy and thriving community where we don't have these cancellations, where we have programs, where we have early education for our keiki, and we can engage our community. So I just want to say, this is not to complain, but this is to be clear that there are frustrations around how community benefits packages work. We have done our best to try to be equitable and accountable and to be transparent with our community and with this body. And I just wanna say mahalo, because I think that when we talk about what Kuhiel envisioned, we are proudly and luckily living that dream. So we mahalo you for your understanding and your patience, and we're happy to answer questions as they arrive, cuz I know you get them directly as Commissioners. Thank you.
Any, any questions for coming?
Um, I, I have one, um, it's, you know, when we talk about responsibility and um, working together, um, one of the challenges that we're facing is uh, whereby uh, members of the community don't pay the association fees. Then we got this, I guess Micah put together this deal whereby they don't pay it so, with so many months or twenty-four months or three years or whatever, and the department will step up and pay it. Which personally, I don't agree with that, but for whatever reason, uh, Micah did enter into this agreement. So I'd like to kinda take a look at that, you, you know, you do got, you guys now have a cash flow. Um, I don't think, because whatever money I give you guys takes away from the other communities that we're trying to set up. And uh, you know, I do wanna make it where it's almost like a default, they don't pay it and all. We can uh, rely on the department to pay these, including the penalty and interest. When you add that, it really gets enormous. So we need to revisit that, and I need to work with you guys, and I don't know how to do it.
Yeah.
Because that money goes to help you guys' communities.
Yeah, so I think every community is a little bit different. Maluohai and Kaupea, those dues go directly to the villages of Kapole. And the reason why that agreement is in place is because those lands were not in the trust. Micah did a land exchange or, or got those lands transferred into the trust. And because there was a developer agreement, a master agreement, they were banking on X amount of homes to be in that subdivision to fund villages of Kapole. Because the homestead lots re-subdivided and made those lots five thousand square feet instead of thirty-five hundred square feet, that's where they lost what they thought they were gonna have, and that's how that legal agreement came to be. So that exists for Kaupea and Maluohai. I think in Maluohai, it's in perpetuity, in Kaupea, it was a one-time payment, but on the back pay, you have to, um, the, the association dues. Kanihili collects their own association dues. Um, I don't think you have to repay Kanihili, but this is an agreement that is specific with villages of Kapole for Kaupea and Maluohai.
Chair, um, it's funny you should bring that up, because I've mentioned that issue before, um, for Commission.
Sure, I will mic.
Okay, so that issue has come before, and I brought it before this Commission. Because every lessie that signs their lease document also signs a lease addendum that includes, in our situation, payment of association fees to the villages of Kapole. Um, I understand when there's people that might have difficulty as what they do with their mortgage, but I collect ten dollars a year from Maluohai Association. I think I've mentioned this to you before. And I even have trouble collecting ten dollars a year. But that was the amount set up by the department, when the department set up Maluohai Residents Association. That's dear. But for the villages of Kapole, and I have no qualms with the amount, we started off at thirty-two dollars, and now twenty-four years later, we're at fifty-three dollars. But we have two community centers, we have a swimming pool, we have programs. But when the department has to go and pay voca for all of the fees in Maluohai that's not being paid, or when they choose, our lessees or their families choose to violate the rules, and voca will tack on a hundred fifty dollars if you're parking your car in the front line, or if you have any other infractions. I have a problem with the department having to pay that, but the department has, and I agree, Kali, that should stop. And we need to find a way where it stops, we also need to find a way when there are people who have a need for the department to support that. And you do, you have your mortgage from Nahazda, you have your mortgage assistance, you have rent assistance, and you have utility assistance. And those are programs that these people could use. But, you know, if thirty percent not paying and the other seventy percent are paying, we're looking around going, why should we pay? And then you're gonna end up with sixty percent not paying and forty percent paying. So at some point, I agree, that we need to establish and let our people know, because there are more. When I got on the list, I didn't even see eight thousand, now it's twenty-nine. So, yeah, let's have that conversation, and I wanna be at the table.
Well, I, I'm kinda putting that out there, because we are gonna start to pursue, pursue these guys that aren't paying. Especially the really blatant, obvious thirty thousand or whatever, we're, we're coming after those guys, and we're gonna cancel.
Now, I will say, Kali, that at one point, the department did try. We did have all of the DCCNR homesteads come together. Um, there was a program set up, what's his name? Oh, Kamaha'ou. There was a program set up, and we tried to implement it, which required the associations to send out thirty-day letters, sixty-day letters, and then a process to contact the department. I believe that would have been back in 2006 or '07. Not sure, but you can check on it. But then that just fell apart. There wasn't enough staff to support that process, and so that just stopped. So maybe we look at something like that again. But I'm not the only homestead, Kaupera, on the big island, La'iu'opu', you know, and any of the homesteads that had DCCNRs, yeah?
Yeah, we do need to collect association, not us, but it, you know, it's been recycled for benefit of the different communities. So the department, um, you know, to a certain extent, um, we'll build it, we'll pay for all the infrastructure, we'll provide the, uh, you know, different loan products and all that. But paying the loans, paying the association dues and fees, it all becomes a responsibility to beneficiaries.
No, it absolutely is, and I agree with you. And I've had many of our homesteaders, believe me, I've had many of them come up to me and say, Auntie, we don't wanna be part of the villages. Why not? Oh, because we gotta pay those dues. What's the problem? We don't wanna pay the dues. Oh, but you signed the lease. You signed the addendum, so that says you agreed to it. You don't have a choice. You need to pay it. Oh, I'm not paying it. Okay, well, you don't have to. Well, why we have to be there? I said, I'll tell you why. Because for the first nine years until voca took over, guess who was out there with my husband and a handful of our neighbors raking all the leaves from the tree, cutting the grass? That's not our Kuliana, but we don't wanna live in a place that's mokaki. So we started doing it. And everybody goes driving, oh, hi Auntie, thank you Auntie, did anybody stop? Would you stop? Are you willing to come out and mow this? Oh, well, we can hire somebody. So what would be the difference if we had to hire somebody in our community or have voca do it for us? At least I know I can count on voca. I can go grumble with them, because I pay them. But, no, you weren't there the first nine years, so I don't remember you stopping. I'm sorry. I'm just being upfront and honest, but I'm okay with that.
Okay, so we'll have a discussion and look for solutions.
That's separate from our thing.
Thank you all for what you guys are doing. Thank you for the leaderships.
Thank you.
Hey, what's the next? Uh, G2, for information only, status update on planned implementation in the Papukolea region and Konamoku Oahu Island.
Aloha, commissioners.
Aloha.
Lily Makaila, Acting Planning Program Manager. Um, here with me today is Kialoa Masman, planner with DHHL's Planning Office with item G2, for information only, status update on plan implementation in the Papukolea region and Konamoku Oahu Island Plan.
Aloha, Chair, aloha, commissioners. As Lady said, I'm Kialoa Masman with the DHHL Planning Office. Uh, first thing, wanna welcome our new commissioner, Commissioner Ornellus. Um, as the planner assigned to Ko'ia, I really look forward to working with you, and it's been lovely meeting your Ohana as well over the past couple of months, so welcome. First, uh, we wanna look at our DHHL planning system. Um, we start here with Tier One, our general plan. Uh, this is a 20, this plan has a 20-year timeframe and looks at our land statewide. Uh, this plan defines our land use, our land use designations, and, um, provides us goals and visions for our strategic program plans, uh, which leads us right down into Tier Two. We have our strategic program plans, such as our water plan and energy, uh, energy policy plans. Um, and we also have in Tier Two our island plans. So, uh, we'll get into that a little bit, but each island plan has about a 20-year timeframe, uh, and then defines each region as well, uh, on those islands. Um, the island plans also provide us with the land use designations for each of these regions. This goes into Tier Three, which provides us with our regional plans. Each regional plan should have a timeframe of five years. Uh, we've been, recently, we've been updating a lot of these regional plans, so hopefully we, uh, intend to stick to these five-year timelines. Uh, and they also, Tier Three, we also have our development plans, which includes our master plans and environmental assessments. Uh, these plans, uh, guide us in the development of our homestead areas. Next slide. So our Oahu Island Plan was approved, uh, by the Hawaiian Homes Commission in 2014. Uh, this plan had, uh, as I said before, had given us a look at the land use designations across the island of Oahu, um, and provided us with the land management purposes, including uh, land use goals, objectives for the general plan, um, to this specific island. It also identifies island-wide needs, opportunities, and priorities, and assigns, um, land use designations to the specific regions. Next slide, please. So in the Oahu Island Plan, uh, there are two planning areas identified along with nine different Ahupua'a. So the two planning areas are located on the west side, Waianae Planning Area along with Nanakuli Planning Area. Um, and we have our nine different Ahupua'a, um, areas with our land holdings in them. Um, so in our Oahu Island Plan, we also identify, uh, residential development priorities along with other priorities. Um, but just focusing on the residential homestead priorities, um, the high priority areas, we have Waianalo and Kapole. Uh, I think for the past 11 years, we have kept that as a high priority uh, with the developments happening in, um, our Kapole area, such as Kanahili, uh, Malu'ohai, and so forth. Uh, we are also looking at the completion of the development at, uh, Kakaina, uh, which is ongoing. Uh, and we are looking at acquiring lands, um, in high applicant preference areas, um, as the office of chair is, uh, currently working on that, uh, at the moment. Uh, we also have medium residential development areas. These are the, uh, five development areas along the Waianae Coast, uh, inclusive of Ma'ili, um, any infill projects in Waianae and Nanakuli Homestead areas, and any expansion of existing homestead communities. And then on our low priority residential development, uh, are Nanakuli and Papukolea, uh, due to its location, potential environmental impacts, and difficulty in development. Next slide, please. So, uh, Konamoku O'Kona, uh, these are some of the planning updates, uh, next slide. So this is the handout I provided you all with. Uh, this is just an exhibit of what our Konamoku, uh, acquisitions look like, or what our Konamoku lands look like. Um, it's inclusive of the areas from Moanalua to Mo'ili'iili, and in the future, hopefully, all the way out to Moanalua. Next slide. So, um, just to go over quick development and land acquisition, uh, projects that the planning office has been involved with, uh, we've been working with the Land Development Division and Land Management Division, um, to acquire the lands, um, it's that tiny little square next to, tiny little blue square. Um, it's next to the bologem on Eisenberg. Um, it's located at 787 Eisenberg Street, and the goal is to supplement and support the development of multifamily housing to address the Oahu Island residential waiting list. Um, so the planning office has been assisting with the compliance and permitting for this space. Uh, we are also helping out with the, uh, acquisition of parcel in the Waianalo Ahupua'. This is actually located in Moanalua, right across the post office in Hoi Kea. Uh, we've been working with our, uh, Land Management Division and our Rapid Development Team to, uh, acquire these lands and, uh, in the effort to, uh, develop multifamily housing out there in a, uh, in a good location for economic, or in a good location for this type of development. Um, so the planning office has been assisting with the permitting and compliance for this parcel as well. So going into our regional plans, next slide. Uh, we have five regional plans for the island of Oahu. Uh, the Kapole Regional Plan, which was originally created in 2010, has been updated in 2022. We also have our Nanakuli Regional, uh, Plan and our Papukolea Regional Plan, which was updated in 2020. Uh, Waianalo was the most recent update in 2024. And then lastly, we have our, uh, Waianae and Lu'alulei Regional Plan. Next slide, please. So these are just some graphics portraying the land use and, um, the, uh, wishes of the community identified in the regional plans. Uh, these are, um, you know, the regions from, uh, Waianae, Lu'alulei, to Nanakuli, to Kapole, and, um, Waianalo. Next slide. So, um, wanted to focus on the regional plan that we have for the Konamoku. This is Papukolea, um, Regional Plan. Um, can you go back one more? Thank you. Um, a part of the Papukolea Regional Plan, uh, we, the land use breakdown here is we have about 85 acres of residential or 407 different parcels of, um, residential land in Papukolea with, uh, possibly 23, uh, proposed residential lots according to our regional plan. Uh, we also have, uh, two acres of community use, 70 acres of conservation land, and 15 acres of special use district, which is that bottom parcel there, we'll talk about in a minute. Next slide. So the Papukolea Regional Plan, um, was updated in 2020. The original draft was brought forward to the commission in February 2020 and received, uh, final approval in July of 2020. The homestead associations and beneficiary organizations, along with the department, are actively forming partnerships and obtaining funding for priority projects and implementation. Um, and then on the bottom here is just the vision and values statement that, uh, you can find in the Papukolea Regional Plan. So the regional plan priorities, next slide. Um, these were the priority, the regional plan priorities identified by the Papukolea community back in 2009. Um, first being addressing abandoned homes, the, and the creation of a Hawaiian Homestead Kupuna Supportive Living Center, uh, the development of a Native Hawaiian Education and Cultural Community Center, uh, any improvements to their, uh, Papukolea Community Center and Park, along with any, uh, repairs and replacement, maintenance of infrastructure. Um, we've definitely made some headway on the last one with, uh, our land development team. Um, but next slide, please. As you can see, the priorities from that first regional plan to the update have not really changed. Um, we still have to, we are still working on addressing the abandoned home issue with our enforcement unit and with Land Management Division. Um, and, uh, the Hawaiian Homestead Kupuna Supportive Living Center, this is a project that is being championed right now by, um, Kula'ono'apoe Hawaii. Uh, was originally kinda picked up by the Papukolea Community Development Corporation. Um, and they've kind of been working in juncture with each other to develop, uh, a Kupuna Supportive Living Center. Uh, the Kula'ono'apoe Hawaii has had about seven different community meetings within the past several months. Um, one of them being a site design and layout meeting. They are working with G70 as well as Hackbed to actively create this, um, this needed infrastructure, uh, development. Uh, the Native Hawaiian Education and Cultural Community Center, this is a, um, project being championed by the Papukolea Community Development Center. They've been working with G70 to, um, to create this center, and, um, we will be talking about it in just a little bit when we go over master plans. Um, the Papukolea Community Center and Park improvements, there have been some headway here. Uh, since 2009, a commercial kitchen was built, uh, 96-panel photovoltaic solar panel system was installed. But for any further improvements, funding, um, still needs to be secured. And then for repair and replacement of any maintenance of infrastructure, as I said, Land Development Division has been making some headway here, especially with, um, any kind of drainage or, um, retaining wall projects. They're also looking at the, uh, replacement or update of the sewer system in the Papukolea area as well. So our master plans and environmental assessments, uh, this is kinda just the layout on how our master plans and environmental assessments, um, lead into the construction of a homestead or a structure. Um, our master plans are, are critical in engineering and design. And then from our engineering and design, we're able to create, uh, our, the needed infrastructure to have a final product. Um, and these, uh, master plans and EA's are informed by our regional plan priority projects. Next slide, please. So currently, um, we have two master plans that are in the works. The first being the Pilinapu'awaina, this is the Kupuna, um, Care Project that we're working on with Kula'ono'apoe Hawaii. Uh, the area that they're working in is a special district area on Pu'awaina. And then, uh, the second one that we're in active work with is Papukolea Community Development Corporation, uh, creating the Native Hawaiian Education and Cultural Community Center. Uh, Kula'ono'apoe Hawaii, as I said, has held, uh, several community meetings. Um, this was to create the direction that not only they as an organization, but what the community wants to see out of this Kupuna Care Home or this, this project overall. Um, they talked about aging in place and health services, what that means, so the research behind it, um, the land use and policies, and then finally culminating to, um, site layout and design. Um, they had just secured the ROE, uh, for this space in, on June 5th. Um, the Land Development Division has been working, uh, or Land Management Division has been working with them to, uh, clear the area of any kind of dangerous debris and, um, any type of, uh, structures that have been made within those bushes. And, um, Kula'ono'apoe Hawaii is looking forward to entering that space and continuing their compliance. Uh, PCDC or Papukolea Community Development, um, Corporation has been working with G70. They have created a site layout and design. Uh, they have also just received their ROE. Um, or their ROE was approved in May, and they are continuing to work to, uh, fulfill the requirements of Chapter 343 to meet compliance as well. So this is just a summary of what we have so far in our regional plans along with the Oahu Island Plan. Um, this is kind of the things that we can look forward to. Um, currently, we have, you know, all these different, uh, residential or agricultural lots that exist. Um, and then in Kapole, we have 705 residential, single-family, um, lots, as well as 550 lots for multifamily projected in the Kapole Regional Plan. Um, for the, for Waianalo, we have, uh, 17 subsistence ag lots projected in that regional plan. Uh, for the focus of Konam, for the Konam District, um, we have 23 single-family residential lots projected for Papukolea. And we also have, uh, multiple, multi-family residential developments projected for the areas of Mo'ili'iili as well as Moanalua. projected for the areas of Mo'ili'iili as well as Moanalu'a. Uh, so our region, our ongoing planning projects are our two projects on the Pu'u Waina Special District Parcel. Um, continuing our design charretts, opportunities for neighbors and community to opine on the project and work together to develop the, uh, infrastructure and developments that they want to see in their community. And we al, we always encourage our communities to come out, to provide comments so that we are working for all of our beneficiaries, not just some. Um, we are al, also ongoing is our infrastructure improvement. Uh, we are working hard with the Land Development Division along with, um, some of our federal partners as well to, uh, install the necessary infrastructure updates that Papukolea has been needing for, um, at least since 2009. Mahalo, that is our update.
Any questions?
Aloha, Stokapua, mahalo for this opportunity to speak on this. I love coming to the meetings, but it's not always possible. Oh. I especially love to see the, uh, slide presentations. I recognize that sometimes they cannot meet the package deadline. So I have two requests. One is to add an addendum to the package to where all of the slide presentations that are not in the original package be subsequently included so that those of us that didn't catch it the first time can catch it a second time. And the third one, um, all of those slide presentations that are in the package, if they could just be extracted so that we could see that without having to go through the 300, 400 pages to find these slide presentations. Michael, thank you so much. Um, if that's possible, because it just makes it so much faster and easier for us to try and keep up with what you folks are discussing. It's never as good or as great as when you have the presentation being provided to you live, but it is staying informed as much as possible. Mahalo.
Mahalo. Hey, um, let's see. Thank you, Ilol. Thank you. Uh, we've come to the end of today's agenda. Mahalo for participating. Tonight's, uh, community meeting will start at 6:30 PM at Stevenson Middle School. And then, uh, tomorrow's agenda starts at 9:30 AM with, uh, carry for item F3 followed by the J Agenda. And mahalo for attending, we are recessed for the day. Thank you.